Mr. Clerk, are you gonna start?
I think with the first order of business is we're gonna pass the bylaw. I'm gonna point to you.
So you want me to make the bylaw to appoint myself as mayor?
Okay, so we do have one bylaw that we're gonna bring forward. First of all, it's bylaw 2018-70, and it's a bylaw to appoint Councillor Vince Carrio as acting mayor in the absence of Jim Diodati.
By Councillor Strange, second by Councillor Peter Angelo. All in favor? Contrary?
So bylaw 2018-70 has been read a first time. So we'll get that motion for a second and third round.
Second and third?
Yep. Moved by Councillor...
Councillor Strange, second by Councillor Peter Angelo.
Perfect, thank you.
All in favor?
Okay, bylaw 2018-70, read a second and third time and passed. So it's official.
Thank you. It might be a good time to say that our mayor, Jim, is under the weather. He's been hospitalized, he's suffering from pneumonia, and we all wish him a speedy recovery. Okay, this evening, we have Gina Prestia.
I'm not sure if she's present yet.
No? I hear you. One of the councillors wanna sing that national...
Generally, it's the mayor.
You wanna get him on the phone? Then we might as well sit down.
Yeah, if she shows up, we can have her.
Okay. The first order of business is the adoption of the minutes, looking for a motion. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Crater, that we adopt the minutes of June the 8th. Any questions or comments on the minutes? And all in favor? Carried unanimously. Do we have any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Councillor Strange?
Yes, your acting mayor. Check number 416290 to myself, and item 11.10, bylaw extension for noise, for eighth annual HERS run for children. I'm on the committee that helps out.
So I'm voted. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, my employer, the Niagara Catholic District School Board has a check on there, 00160-0004.
Councillor Aiononi?
Check 416628 made out to myself.
Councillor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, your worship. We got two. Check made out to myself, 416133, and one made out to my wife, 416353 for refund services.
And then Councillor Crater?
Under Municipal Counts, check number 416155 for services payable to myself.
Any others? I've duly noted, Mr. Clerk. And then we'll move on to number five. This was prepared by the mayor, obituaries. Karen Wilvers, Courtney, mother-in-law of Jeff Anderson, Municipal Works Department. Brenda Fisher Hyde, daughter of former city council member Shirley Fisher. Ken Boudelier, retired platoon chief and uncle of fire chief Jim Boudelier. Sheila Deatonback, mother of Tom Deatonback of Fire Services. Angela Amara, father-in-law of Rob Vachon of our Municipal Works Department. Reverend Duncan Lyon, who used to give the address and prayer at the city's Remembrance Day services for many years. And John Holer. We wish the families, give the families our condolences. And is there anyone else that would like to comment on any of the... Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I'd just like to recognize Duncan Lyon, first of all, for probably 25 years did our Remembrance Day service without fail. A great community person, and certainly somebody that was a great asset for the municipality. And while I'm standing, just to say how sad it is to see John Holer, creative of Marineland, passing. Totally a unique and different person who was totally dedicated to one focus throughout his entire life, and had a tremendous impact on this municipality, jobs, and the tourist industry. So sad to see him gone, too.
Thank you. Mayor Diodati wanted me to mention councillors that represented him for many events. Councillor Strange, the German Village Soccer's 60th anniversary. Councillor Thompson, the grand opening of Niagara Slims. Councillor Crater, opening ceremony of Chinese Multicultural Folk Arts Day. Councillor Peter Angelo, Canada Day Parade, special citizenship ceremony, grand opening of gaming gators, the Club Italia Annual Festival. The mayor and the city thanks you. Also, we have some announcements. And it's my pleasure to announce that the Toronto Maple Leafs will be training again in Niagara in the fall of 2018. The Toronto Maple Leaf Training Camp will take place from September 14th to the 16th at the Gale Centre. The club has previously held its 2017-2018 Training Camp and 2016 Development Camp in Niagara Falls. Fans will have the opportunity to watch the camp as the team hosts practices and scrimmages. There will also be contests, outdoor activities, and a Toronto Maple Leafs alumni game. Current Maple Leaf players and Maple Leaf alumni will also be taking part in community appearances over the weekend. Maple Leaf Development staff will be onsite conducting clinics and other development-related programming for various minor hockey groups. Full details and weekend schedule will be released in the coming weeks. Fans will have the opportunity to see players such as William Nylander, Mitch Marner, Austin Matthews, and newly acquired John Tivers. Next council meeting will be Tuesday, August 14th. Next, we have deputations and presentations. Number 6.1.
If I could just interrupt momentarily, your worship. We do have a deputation. Is Alex DeGenis and Doug Smith present? They are here. If we could just get a motion of counsel, if we could have them moved up on the agenda or...
Moved by Councillor Aiononi, second by Councillor Strange, that we listed them first. All in favor? Carried?
If you wanna just read, go ahead and read that, and then just introduce it.
Alex DeGenis and Doug Smith from the Wise Guys Charity would like to update council regarding their work their charity group is involved with. Gentlemen, I'm gonna come up to the microphone and... Your worship? Councillor?
Well, according to the microphone, Alderman or Councillor Morocco asked that I let everyone know that she's absent, she's away on vacation.
Okay. So noted.
My name is Alex DeGenis, and this is my colleague and friend, Mr. Doug Smith. I really appreciate the council's time and taking to listen to a very brief presentation. I've watched enough of these city councils to understand that a lot of times when we have speakers who have events, activities, festivals, they come and pitch ideas, and typically, at the end, they ask for money. We, on behalf of Wise Guys Charity, would like to break that tradition and ask for nothing other than...
So moved.
Yes, that's the end of the presentation. It's very interesting, as we're sitting around the table talking to volunteers that have been spearheading this Wise Guys Charity for the last 27 years, one thing has become abundantly clear, and that is that there's a vast need for resources for people doing good work in the community. And there is also a lack of resources and money to enable those people to do the good work that they're doing. Wise Guys Charity has got a long history of providing those resources to people all over Niagara. And the one thing that's become very, very glaringly clear is that Niagara Falls is woefully underrepresented in the applicants that we receive. So in a nutshell, this organization that is 100% volunteer-based, 100% of the money goes back into the community. There's nobody paid that is in our organization that helps to raise this money. And there is an application process that Doug will talk about. I've asked Doug to just basically give a little bit of a historical context and the magnitude of what this organization has done with Niagara or to Niagara to help people in Niagara. And as I said, we're here to basically tell you that I know that there's a need in Niagara Falls, we're just not hearing about it. So the ask, if I can cut to the chase, is for all of the influential people in this room, all of the community and civic leaders that I'm looking at and that I've gotten to know over the years, if you could help spread that word to people and organizations in your community, in a very important community in Niagara, if you can help spread that word that we exist and that we've got resources, we just need to get it to Niagara Falls, those resources to Niagara Falls, we would be grateful. I'm gonna introduce Doug to Wise Guys for a minute. I'd also like to ask council if I could just hand out just something that gives a little bit of an...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So my three-minute presentation's about 30 seconds now because of Alex's details, but really, thank you for having us, and I just wanted to be able to give you a little bit of history and as briefly as possible. But the Wise Guys Charity Fund is a registered charity. We started about approximately 28 years ago. My dad and I started it amongst and among numerous volunteers. And basically, as Alex said, we raise money in Niagara for Niagara. 100% of the funds raised goes back, it has to stay in Niagara. We spread it from the corners of Fort Erie and Port Colborne to Grimsby and everywhere in between. The history of the name is quite simple. We started raising money for the, what was then going to be built, Locker YMCA many years ago. And in wanting to start a golf tournament and run some events, my dad and I re-cloned the Wise Guys, Y apostrophe S. As we raised about 125,000 for the Y, we wanted to continue our golf tournament, wanted to continue to spread the wealth, hence needing to change the name, but not, good marketing people said, "Don't change the name." So that's where the W-I-S-E came from, and the history of that's how that started. About 13 years ago, we surpassed $100,000 in funds raised in one year. In 2015, which was our 25th anniversary, we surpassed $250,000 raised in a year. And last year, we raised just over 350,000. Certainly, it has grown leaps and bounds, the events have grown, and the volunteer base and the committees have grown. We have a signature Wise Guys Golf Tournament that actually takes place next week. 232 golfers, sold out perennially with a waiting list. We have a large auction night the evening before. The Wise Girls are about to tee up their fourth annual all-female golf tournament. Again, a sold-out 144 female golfer event. We have a boxing night, we have a bike ride, we have an auction now, we have a pub night. To date, we've raised and rolled back into Niagara just over $3.1 million. It is a registered charity, and there's a very formal procedure for granting out the money. So organizations looking for grants apply through a grant request process. It's all available information online. Those grant requests are reviewed on an annual basis, in-depth due diligence is done, and the board of directors approves the grants for that year. So to give you an idea, we've written checks for as little as $500, we've written checks for as big as $100,000. This year alone, we will write 23 checks to 23 different organizations for over 350,000. And really, as Alex said, what we're looking at more than anything is to try and get Niagara Falls more involved. I think more involved in some of the events that are run and the fundraising, but more importantly to us really is getting them more involved in the grant process and getting the word out. It's not that we don't get any, and certainly they're online, there's a list of almost all of the supported projects. You'll see there are numerous ones from Niagara Falls, but per capita, I would have to say that is by far the lowest of all the cities and towns in Niagara. Thanks.
Any questions of Alex and Doug?
Yes, Mr. Clerk. I just wanna thank Doug and Alex, because they do incredible work around the Niagara region, and known you guys for years, and obviously from the big boxing event that you put on and raised so much money. So I wanna thank you, and hopefully we can get the word out, maybe we can put their event on our website anyways, and try to help spread the word, and try to get some help for people from Niagara Falls that need it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I can't imagine your popularity not being enhanced by walking into an organization and letting them know that there are resources available that they may not have known about. So ultimately, we're entrusting the leaders in the room to be able to spread that word, and it's gotta be an amazing day and occasion when you walk in and you're able to help those guys out. So thank you very much for your attention.
Alex and Doug, thank you very much for all the effort and the success of your fundraising. On behalf of the mayor and the council and the citizens, we thank you. And I'm sure that after this, you'll be getting, you'll hear from a lot of people in Niagara Falls that will need your services.
That was the point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go on to 6.1.
Under deputations, number 6.1, adult business licensing delegation. Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, there is a bylaw on tonight's agenda dealing with this matter of the delegation of authority whereby the city will delegate their authority to enforce the business licenses for adult entertainment back to the Niagara region. There are six municipalities within the region that would be affected by this, and the area CAOs have been meeting over the past several months to review and comment on this process, and have all fully supported this new business model with respect to licensing, which also includes the transition of licensing and enforcement of other types of licenses from Niagara Regional Police Services onto the region. Tonight, we have Jeanette Gomans, who is the Business Improvement Manager with the Internal Control and Organizational Performance Division at the Niagara region, and she's with us this evening to present to council this transition.
Welcome.
Thank you. So on behalf of staff at Niagara Falls, we wanted to offer some support with content in being able to present the project and put some facts forward so that you can inform your decision today. We're here basically to move forward what's a delegation of authority. So I'll get into sort of the nuances of that in the presentation. So some of the key points to the project. Currently, NRPS, Niagara Regional Police Services, enforces business licenses for taxis, transportation network companies, that's your Uber type of taxi, Teamsters or vehicles for hire, auto records, salvage yards, secondhand goods stores, and adult entertainment. Niagara is unique in its municipal peers in having police services enforce business licenses. So we are looking to align with industry practice as the majority of municipalities across Ontario enforce at the municipal level, not with their police. NRPS staff have informally communicated that when the region takes back the business licenses that we have jurisdiction over on the upper tier, that maintaining a unit for the adult entertainment where the jurisdiction lies at the lower tier or the local municipality tier is not sustainable. We're currently working toward taking that to the NRPS board to get a formal declaration of their position, which is later this week on Thursday. And the project should have two phases. So our first phase is focusing on the migration, transitioning the unit from NRPS to Niagara region, making that as seamless as possible, and to impact the customer as little as possible. And then phase two will be a review of the business unit. So it's operating procedures to ensure that they're operating efficiently, to ensure that it's a cost-recoverable model, and that customer service is high. So we did look at a number of models when we started looking at the opportunity to transition. Performance Concepts Consulting was engaged and submitted a report to Niagara region recommending the use of a hybrid model for enforcement. So this would be a partnership between NRPS and Niagara region to ensure that public safety is upheld and that enforcement is effective, and then as well as maintaining that customer service side. So when you have a business owner coming into Niagara region to receive a business license, that they're receiving good service when they get there. So throughout the process, with the review of this report, there were a number of unknowns that came out of it that when I was engaged as a project lead, we looked into. And what we discovered at that point was that jurisdictional divide that wasn't recognized in that report. So meaning, the adult entertainment business licenses fall at the local area municipality level, and the others I referenced, like the taxis and the auto records and the secondhand stores, fall at the upper tier. So we had to negotiate that because originally that wasn't recognized. So we did a SWOT analysis of different business models to try to understand what we wanted to do with that. The first was a region-only model, meaning the Niagara region would take on all business licenses. That would require a delegation of authority from the local area municipalities as you hold the jurisdiction over those adult entertainment pieces. So for us to take it all, we would have to negotiate those. The other is an LAM-only model. So given that the LAMs already have business licenses that they're enforcing, that they would take on everything from NRPS and absorb it into their current business. The third was an LAM-region shared model. So basically, we would absorb back what we hold jurisdiction over. So whatever the upper tier has jurisdiction over, Niagara region would take, and the adult entertainment would be absorbed back into the LAM, and then a privatization. So at this point, we engaged the local CAOs to inform them on the work that we had been doing with the project, and also get their feedback as to where they might sit with it, and unanimously, there was support for the region-only model. We also received support of this in our own leadership within the Niagara region. So with that model in mind, we had a couple of decisions to make. So if it was to come to Niagara region, where would it land? So we made the decision to onboard it into the general manager's portfolio. So that's Chris Carter, and under Chris is a customer service unit. So given that there's someone coming in from the public, receiving a service from the Niagara region and applying for their business license, we thought it was a nice alignment with his unit. The other is to transition using the region-only model. So again, we have to navigate those jurisdictional boundaries. So part of our plan is to come out to all the local area municipalities, like yourself, and get a delegation of authority passed in order to take on the adult entertainment piece, and that we would use a partnership model with police. So a hybrid model is difficult logistically, but a partnership model is very seamless. So Niagara region would be responsible for the enforcement of the business license, so making sure that those people out there exercising those businesses have a valid license and are meeting the criteria to have that license. And then any criminal aspects related to the type of business that's related or any criminal behavior would be managed by the police, and there would be a standard operating procedure developed to ensure that communication is facilitated quite seamlessly. So next steps, as I referenced earlier, our date has changed a little bit. Originally, we were gonna go in front of the NRPS board on June 28th, but it's been moved to Thursday, the 12th. So Thursday, we're attending the NRPS board to request that they declare their official position with regard to what they would like to do with the adult entertainment licenses should the Niagara region take back those licenses over which it has jurisdiction. So we will report back on what that turnout is at a later date. For you, the local area municipalities, the next steps are to get the delegation of authority approved at the councils. So currently, there are, it's in fact, five local area municipalities who have, sorry, six municipalities with adult entertainment establishments or bylaws, and five that currently delegate their authority to enforce that bylaw to NRPS. So you are one of those five. And in order for us to exercise the region-only model, we require these delegations to be passed, and the Niagara region's preference is that all local municipalities participate in order to support that cost-recovery model. So with the passing of your delegation, that will change who has the authority to enforce the bylaw on your behalf. So as a result, we'll have to update the documents that then go along with that. So your bylaw will have to reflect that Niagara region is the authority that has the enforcement piece, and the agreements that go along with the delegation of authorities. So here in Niagara Falls, for example, you have retained the appeals process. So if someone is denied a business license, currently, the appeal comes here to the city rather than going to NRPS. The plan to initially onboard the region is not to make changes to the rules. We want to take the system that's already in place, bring it over to the Niagara region so that for the customer or the clientele that are applying and maintaining their licenses, that change will not affect them. And then when we look at the business model, if there's changes down the road, we would fully engage the public in that process if we were wanting to make changes later. So right now, the agreement that you have with NRPS would just be adjusted to reflect the Niagara region as the body, and the, sorry, the bylaw would also be amended to reflect the Niagara region. Okay, and then for us, in order for us to transition the business unit, we also need to pass a bylaw of our own. So we plan to, after we've engaged all of the local area municipalities in obtaining these delegations and seeing where we're at with that, we're going to return to our own council to gain their approval of a bylaw to then enforce business licenses, either with just our jurisdiction, and then depending on the outcome of the local area municipality councils, fitting the adult entertainment piece in there as well. So that's a timeline. So basically, we're looking to try to get to everyone in July. We do have a couple of local area municipalities that we've deferred to August, and then looking to return to our own council after that. So that's all I have for slides. If anyone has any questions, I can...
Questions, Councillor Thompson?
Well, first thing is, I would like to have seen that a little earlier so we would have an opportunity to digest all of the details. Are you talking about taking over all of the licensing for all of those different functions that you showed here initially? Salvage yards, everything like that?
Yes. So everything except the adult entertainment does fall to the upper-tier jurisdiction, so we are looking to onboard that into the region.
Okay. Maybe you could make your first stop out on Montrose Road with the salvage mess out there, I tell you. Anyway, have you had dialogue with the adult entertainment people? I had a couple of calls today when I heard that this is going on. I think it's a good move forward. I support that, but I really didn't have any details about this. Is there going to be dialogue with the stakeholders?
Yes, absolutely. So the reason we haven't communicated yet is because the decision has not been official. So waiting for our own council to pledge support with the passing of the bylaw, and then an information, a communication plan with information out for what that means for everyone involved.
Okay, I think positive move, and I think that there's complaints all... And I think that there's complaints all the time about the timeline on the weekends with respect to the licensing of the dancers. Is that going to remain with the police or is that going to be with the region?
The, meaning the availability to apply?
Yes.
So currently, we're not going to change the hours of service upfront. But again, once it's onboarded and we have it at the region, we are going to do a full summer review of the business unit and that would include engagement of all the stakeholders. So if they wanted to offer that feedback, they could.
Yeah, I think the key element here is the feedback from the stakeholders. So we don't have to listen to it. Anyway, I think a positive move.
Thank you.
Counselor Creeter?
Thank you very much. Counselor Thompson is quite right. It's a lot to digest in a short time. And he's right, I do wish I'd kind of seen it more in advance. I'm trying to be critical, more in advance so I could understand it. You must have had some dialogue with the Police Services Board. Do you have a feeling from them or is this some? I know you're going to have the official discussion with them, but did they approach you about going down this road or was it initiated through the region to go down this road?
So I was assigned to the project by the CAO and my understanding is that the Niagara Region has initiated the review of the services that it had NRPS delivering or enforcing on our behalf. And business licensing was one of those. And then through that review, the recommendation coming out of the consultant's report then fueled the project to move forward to actually do the transition. So Niagara Region.
Specifically, it's the premise is to deal with the adult entertainment.
For you today, that is the premise.
That's why you're here for us.
Exactly. For us, it's all of them. Everything that NRPS is enforcing.
So to the general public, what you're saying is that the police, who were doing this through the Niagara Regional Police Services Board, if this passes, they're not going to be doing it anymore, except maybe the enforcement because they must have, as police officers, they have certain authorities.
The enforcement of the business licensing would come to the Niagara Region. If there's anything criminal in nature attached to the businesses, that would still reside with the police.
Oh, that's where, okay.
Yeah.
And what's the cost to the municipality? Is there a cost to the taxpayers if we were to go ahead with this?
No.
There's no cost. We're not going to be asked by the region that they need additional funds because there's new models and services are being delivered differently and so Niagara Falls needs to pay more for whatever that is. So that's not going to happen.
No, with their model proposed, it should be a cost-recoverable function. So we would recover the cost of the operating with the fee schedule.
And so if the public has a concern about an adult entertainment center or somebody underage working it, then they'd be calling the region and not the police anymore?
Correct.
So they have to go into the region to get a regional office, have somebody? I'm just trying to get this clear. So someone from within the region is going to have special authority? Do they have to be given any additional authority they already have in order to enforce, except the criminal part? Do they require any other authority or zero authority? Because the police have, we know they have unique authorities.
Right. So as the owner of the bylaw, we retain the right to enforce the bylaw and we would hire a bylaw enforcement officer similar to your tobacco officer or your health inspector. And those people would have the authority to go in and inspect the license and ensure that A, that everyone there has a license as required and B, that they're meeting the criteria to maintain that license.
And then I guess at this stage, requiring prosecution for someone is not following the letter of the law, then it's the region? You have regional prosecutors that would prosecute it? Would it come back through the police or through that agency?
Correct. It would go from us through to the court system.
To the court. Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem.
Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question. Are you looking for a motion tonight or is there going to be something coming back to council in the future?
So I believe we provided a motion to staff. Staff has reviewed it and put it forward, is my understanding. And we're really looking for the approval of the delegation of authority. So you would be delegating the authority to the Niagara Region to enforce, administer the business licenses for adult entertainment.
Do we have that motion?
Well, what we have is we have a bylaw on the agenda tonight.
Oh, that's going to be coming up later on?
Yes, yeah. You could certainly make, have counsel make a motion to approve that.
Counselor Thompson? Second?
I'll second the motion, but also indicate that this has been going on for five, six years or so with dialogue with the stakeholders to try to change the format. So this has been going on for a long time. And to see that coming here tonight, I think is appropriate. And I think it's a positive move. So I would second the motion that we endorse the resolution and approve the bylaw.
To delegate the authority to the region. We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Thompson, that we delegate the adult entertainment licensing to the region, right? Any questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor? Carry unanimously? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's still to be worked out. Yeah, the business model will be reviewed at a later date.
Sure, I can't fire them tonight?
No. All right, can you introduce the next item?
Number 6.2. Right? 6.2 Trail Operations, CN Trail Operations. Do we have Neil? Neil?
Should we train operations?
Carl. Carl, sorry, Carl.
Thank you. Sorry, I'd just like to do a brief overview. And on there, it says Trail Operations. It really should say Train Operations. So, good evening, Council. Tonight, our consultant, WSP, will provide you with an update to the Rail Impact Study. This came before council previously in May. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the team that helped put this together with the consultant. That's city and regional staff, the mayor, Counselor Thompson, who has been actively involved in the rail aspect for many years. I know we talked about it when I started almost 30 years ago. So he's been there for quite a while. And in addition to that, we have, as part of the team, an advisory person who's Gary McNeil. And Gary, if you want to stand, he's a special advisor and he's also the former president of Go Transit, where he was there president for 14 years. And he definitely added many aspects to the review as we went along. And also to acknowledge a person, Matthew Bilodeau, who's our Transportation Engineering Manager. Young guy who just started with us in that position and he took over the lead as the project manager and has done a fine job with it. So as you will hear tonight as well, there's been much public consultation and stakeholder involvement. So we've got everybody engaged in this. And I think there was a mention from a council meeting that after our first open house, that there wasn't enough people responding to it. And we reacted to it and that was through our business development group, Dale Morton, who helped us put together some signs that I'm sure everybody saw as they approached the tracks. There was these large signs, please, if you're stopped, please let us know your feelings about it. So, which was a great addition and spurred about over 500 responses. So that was great. So now I'd like to introduce Neil Ahmad. He's Senior Project Manager with WSP and it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Carl, and good evening. I have a series of about 12 slides just to run through to give you an overview of our study progress. We start with a background here and it's really just to set the scene of what we've been up against. You'll know the CN Stanford sub, which is the one that diagonally intersects the town and I will have a slide on that shortly. But there are 14 at-grade rail crossings on that piece of track. There are regular long train delays on that particular piece of track happening multiple times during the day. There are also breakdowns. You'll be familiar with that as well and that's happening more often than anybody would like. So these instances, regular and unexpected, cause problems for emergency services firstly in terms of providing for the services that they're required to undertake. And there's also things about the transit operations, getting buses on a schedule and across those tracks to provide an efficient service. All of these things are impacted by these train movements. So there has been a longstanding requirement to find potential solutions to this and that's been the focus of our project. I would also note that the study sort of supersedes and builds on a 2007 study that was undertaken to look at grade separations as a solution. So this is the piece of track that we're talking about. The yellow one here, which is the Stanford sub, is a CN track. And we've highlighted all of the 14 at-grade road crossings in that piece of track. I will note that some of these crossings are regional roads and so the region has been involved throughout this process. Our study is multifaceted. Carl mentioned, we have had a large consultation process, but we've also been doing some analysis work. At the top there, you'll see the transportation assessment. We're looking at the delays that are caused by these trains, trying to actually get some numbers together that represent what the delays are and how to bring that into the equation. We are looking at the potential of rail rerouting. It's another large circle there. That's something that I think is a very positive potential. We are looking at socioeconomic, what's happening in the community and the business world in terms of the trains and the delays and impacts they cause, but also the services that the rail provides in terms of sightings to business. And we've also been undertaking some public engagement. So I'll talk a bit about each of these shortly. This is our study timeline here, just highlighting on the consultation events as they've been moving forward. This has been a very short study. It's about a six-month timeframe overall, started in March. We had our launch in April 2018 with a survey. Had two open houses already, one in April, one in May. And today's council presentation, we're going to be finishing up with some documentation over the summer months. So our process has been to engage people, look at a lot of available information because we wanted to really understand the problems, the source of the problems and the extent of the problems, really get that picture. And that helps us, together with the consultation, the input that we're getting from the community, to craft some recommendations. So on the consultation front, as Carl was mentioning, we had these sign boards, they're illustrated in the graphic here alongside the roadways at the crossings. And we've had a good response, over 500 responses through your website and survey that we put together to get input from the community on this issue. We've had two rounds of stakeholder meetings. We've engaged with all of the emergency services in the area together with the regulatory agencies and the business community to get all of their different inputs on this. And we've had the two open houses at the community center. So this has been a very positive and intense consultation opportunity. The city has been heavily involved in all aspects of this. We've got some key takeaways from the consultation, the things that we've been learning. I've thrown a few of them up on the slide here just to give you some ideas about what we are learning. Just quickly run through those. So we see that of the people that we heard from, about 49% of them cross a rail track at least twice per day and at least 50% are delayed at least once per day by a train. So these are pretty significant numbers. A lot of the people are delayed by, for over 20 minutes in these issues. 20% are rerouting after about waiting for five minutes and over 50% are rerouting after 15 minutes of delay. We note here that businesses, some of them are reliant on training services. They are requiring siding access to support their business. We've also learned, of course, that the emergency services, the fire department, has a strategy to actually respond from two different stations on either side of a track in the event that they have an emergency to respond to in order to make sure that they get to a fire on time or an emergency. So everybody's adapting as best they can to these circumstances. And we've also noted student transport delays, school buses are also a part of this picture. So overall, we've got a lot of good consultation. I think we're getting a good reaction from the community. They're very supportive of the idea of addressing this problem. So one of the things that we were looking at was the traffic picture. What's happening out there? We all know there's delays. We've actually tried to put some numbers to these things. We did some survey work recently and we were identifying up to four major, these long trains happening daily with a total closure time of 30 to 35 minutes per day per crossing. So when you think about one of these trains coming through four times a day and 30 to 35 minutes over the course of a day per crossing, that's a lot of delay time. And we also note in the second bullet there, between 8,000 and 10,000 vehicles in total crossing that rail line during the peak hours, AM and PM peak hours. So there's a lot of potential for delay here. We've also noted in the third bullet there, over the four years between 2015 and 2018, there have been 21 CN train breakdowns. And these can come up to about two hours in length. And 11 of those were over the peak hours. So these breakdowns are unexpected and they can take a long time to clear up, but there have been a significant number of them over the four years. So one of the things we've been looking at, and I know you're probably looking at this as a potential solution, is rail rerouting. The idea of moving that through train traffic out of Niagara Falls onto other active rail lines. We have a rail specialist on our team who's worked previously with CN and CP and he's got a good handle on what's potential here. So we have some ideas. We have three actual alternatives that we've been looking at. You can see them on the graphic here. The green line, which is the shortest improvement, would be to rerouting, reroute trains across the Royal Rapids Bridge. It is a possibility. It does have some downsides, but it is something that was worth considering. We also were looking at the Trillium Railway as an option, the blue line there, which would bring traffic down, rail traffic down outside of the city and down into the Port Colborne area to then reconnect with the Stanford sub into the US. And we have a third rerouting option, which is to reroute trains onto the CP tracks from Hamilton. That's the yellow line and it would represent, again, moving the through traffic out of Niagara Falls and onto an existing CN line in this case, which would rejoin the Stanford sub down at Port Colborne and into the States that way. So each of these different alternatives, they all have their opportunities, their benefits, but there are also implications and impacts that come with these. We are considering them and need to also engage with some key stakeholders in looking at these further. This graphic here, or the table is, I'm not going to go through all the detail of it, but we've been assembling a summary of the pros and cons of all of these different options, looking at what's possible, what are the opportunities that they represent and where the issues may be. So we do have this to work with. We are in the process of moving this forward. As you may see by the numbers of benefits and the numbers of challenges, we do have a preference at this point, which is option three, the line out of Hamilton. It seems to be a good option and has a lot of potential there. So of the three, we seem to be favoring that one at the moment. In terms of the overall project though, if we find that we're not getting any traction with the, sorry, okay. If we don't, if we have no traction with the moving trains onto other tracks, if that doesn't seem to be a viable solution, then we are going to be looking for rail grade separations. And we just have an example here of the potential of four rail grade separations. These are very expensive construction jobs and we've estimated that each of these would be in the five to six-year range for planning, design and construction. And if the city were to undertake these incrementally or sequentially, that would represent up to 20 to 24 years of implementation time to get all of these four built and operating at a cost of between $25 to $60 million. So there's some pretty significant costs and pretty significant times involved in that approach as compared to rail rerouting. I've just got a couple more slides here. So we just wanted to note that we are going to be doing an assessments, bringing all of these different alternatives, both the rerouting and the grade separation options into a common base, which is a cost-benefit analysis. So we're going to be looking at that to look at that picture, see what's- So we're going to be looking at that to look at that picture, see what's providing the best benefits for the cost. And we will be looking at things like vehicle travel time savings, improvements in collision rates, improvements in vehicle operating costs because of idling time and that sort of thing, as well as environmental savings, which, again, come back to idling time at the rail crossings, people waiting, and we're also looking at rail travel time. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at, and that's an ongoing aspect right now. Last slide here is our next steps, and it's really just to highlight that we are going to be doing that cost-benefit analysis shortly, and we do need to have some discussions with these rail companies, both the CN and CP, and perhaps Trillium Rail Lines, to talk about these ideas we've got. We will be bringing a formal recommendation to you later for direction and approval, and we are continuing with some documentation over the summer months. And there was last point there to, the city does want to monitor the rail traffic to continue to watch for any violations of CN operations, waiting on the tracks too long, that kind of thing. So that's the sort of thing that's going to be happening over the next little while, and that's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have questions, Councilor Anone and Councilor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your discussions with CNCP will take place after this whole purpose is done, as you follow your steps?
We are completing a report, and maybe Carl's probably better placed to answer that question.
So what is needed to do is we need to complete our report, complete all the analysis, and then present it with CN and CP and have discussions with them. So basically, you have to have your background information in order to sit down and talk with them. Otherwise, they won't talk to you.
Thank you. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to council. When I went to Halifax to FCM, there was a CN booth there, and their executives were at the CN booth, and you wear your tag. And when they looked at my tag, they went, oh, you're from Niagara Falls. It happened to be the same day we were having the public meeting here, and she said, no, I'm very, very familiar with Niagara Falls. And I kind of chuckled, and I said, you know, they're having their public meeting in regards to potentially moving the rail line. And the gentleman with her said to me, I don't know how old you are, but I can assure you, in your lifetime, that's never going to happen. And he said, do you know how many communities are lined up in front of you to have this happen? And another, because it became very interesting with my Niagara Falls tag, and they started to hand me documentation. This was the first documentation they handed me, and it was their Transportation of Dangerous Goods. The second one they handed me was the CN, Working With Our Neighbors For A Brighter Future, and it highlights what they're doing in communities. And the second, and the last one they handed me was CN, Safety Is A Core Value. And they said to me, even in Lackmogentick, we are not rerouting everything. And what they are rerouting is 12.8 kilometers. It's costing the federal government, it's costing between the government and the feds and the province of Quebec, $133 million, where the feds are picking up $60 million. He said, get in line. So while I understand we've never wanted to assume the cost of an overpass, I think the numbers that you put here are very alarming, and it says, oh, we either have to move it or we're not going to have one or the other. 12 years ago, had we approved the overpass, it would have been $14 million. I still have that report sitting at home. I think Janice Wing and I were the only two here who voted for the overpass, but it was $14 million at the time. So we've kind of missed that boat here, where it's going to cost us very much more, but I would hate to think that we are putting all of our apples in a basket and believing CN is going to reroute. Because when he said line up behind all the other communities, they all want to reroute, it kind of sent a very clear message. And I don't want us to put everything into that one solution that comes down to CN deciding for us, and then the federal government funding them to do that. Just wanted to give council the update of what took place at FCM.
Carl, did you want to answer that, because I have Councilor Thompson?
If I can get perhaps Mr. McNeil to just respond to Councilor Anone on that issue.
Yeah, I think the interesting thing, unlike Lackmogentick and others, this is really more of a traffic delay issue than safety issue. The train movement through the city is actually fairly safe because the trains go so slow. It's a fairly safe operation. But what we're trying to do through our business case model is not only look at the benefits to the city, but there's also benefits to CN and CP for relocating the through train movements. It's a shorter route for CN. We know that they can save a lot of money in their maintenance. It allows some freedom of movement of the GO train service along the Grimsby subdivision into Niagara Falls, which can avoid some additional track that might have to be built if there's freight trains there as well. So we're looking at a comprehensive business case analysis, and actually, we're hoping to encourage CN to make the move, because it'll make good business decision for them.
Councilor Anone, you want to answer?
And I'm not arguing with you. I'm relaying to you the message, but the part that I had forgot to highlight was, they asked me if Niagara Falls really believed traffic interruption was as important as public safety, because there are public safety issues in communities that want to reroute the train. So thank you for highlighting that. But it was said to me very sarcastically, you really believe you're going to be on a priority, because it's traffic interruption and not safety. So I'm just relaying, and when they hand this, they said, this is what we're, and in Lackmogentick, they're actually trenching down, as opposed to make it safer. They're building it so if the train comes off the track as it's trenched down, there won't be, they won't have the catastrophe they had when the train derailed. But they kind of shook their head in disbelief at me. So I just wanted you to understand that, and they were very aware of what we were doing down here.
Councilor Thompson?
How long have we been talking about this?
You were talking about before I was born.
Pardon me?
Before I was born.
Well, we got rid of one of them, which worked out extremely well. But, you know, I think the key element, and I can't talk about this without mentioning the committee that was set up and functioned for probably 10 years or more, and the key person involved, who has passed away, the late Red Issopon, he actually had drawings of all of these alternatives years ago, and was so knowledgeable about this issue. And what we're doing now is gathering information, and I was really impressed with what I could see, your alternatives. And as soon as I got to the end, and I read the two letters from Olio and Bruce Ward and his group, all of a sudden, you have to say, there's got to be a mixture of what we can do here. And if you're talking about building overpasses, $60 million, they said, I think in his report, Matthew, said $60 million. If you had so many of them, it would be over $300 million. And is that going to happen in your lifetime? I don't think so.
But one, huh? One overpass, huh?
Well, I think that's what we're probably talking about, some opportunities to service the industrial properties that we have to think about, reducing and bypassing as many of them that don't have an interest in coming within the municipality. And you can't do that without having all of the information. And I think that this study and the final analysis is really going to be helpful in easing some of the traffic through the city, still servicing some of the few industry that we have, and the safety issue with some of the toxic chemicals that are going through our areas, and the rail damage that happens periodically. So all of these things are so important to us, and by having this information, we can finally make a decision, maybe one, maybe two overpasses, with servicing what we have to, but getting most of them out of the area. I think that's the objective here. And the one that Councilor Anone was talking about, the people in the area were so upset that we were going to put an overpass on Morrison Street for $15 million, not 14, $15 million. They were so upset, we don't want that in the area, and the council made that decision because of the public coming out and objecting to it. That's what I look, but I think we're on the right track, get the information, and then we can come up with the best solution. Maybe it's not going to affect everybody around the table with this council, but it's going to be good for the community in the long term, and it may be 24 years.
Councilor Anone?
And in that frame, if we're looking at both solutions, I think we missed the boat there in having maybe 15 people from a street decide for the rest of the community whether an overpass went there, and what was the better good, what was the greater good, putting the overpass there so emergency services could get over, or bowing to the wishes of 15 residents. I really think we missed the boat there. We're $11 million up now. But I want to make sure that we're looking at both possibilities at the same time, and the city's looking at putting in a possibility of an overpass in our potential future budgets. Because I would hate to see us get to the point where CN says, that's not going to happen, we told you it's not going to happen. And we are still years behind, and our emergency services are still sitting on a train while somebody who's having a heart attack is waiting for them on the other side, and perhaps we're losing a life because there was a dollar amount we didn't want to reach, or we didn't do it quick enough. So I'd like to see us looking at both opportunities at the same time, and the city factoring that into the budget.
Carl?
Thank you. Yes, this report does look at both options, of course, with a focus towards the solution that's best, and it may be the relocation. It doesn't mean the elimination of the tracks, it just means the relocation of the through traffic. So businesses, if it is relocated, can still be served. So this report will deal with that. So when it comes back, we'll be able to look at both options.
Are there any other questions? Because the recommendation is that the report is for the information of council. Staff will be providing a complete project update following the next steps identified in this report. So they're not looking for any action? Counselor?
Received and filed.
Move by Councilor Thompson, second by Councilor Anone, received and filed. Thank you, gentlemen.
No, it's advertised for 6:00 p.m. It's advertised for 6:00 p.m.
All in favor? Opposed? Carry unanimously? Thank you. Planning matter 7.1. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a single detached dwelling on a vacant parcel of land located on the south side of Lyons Creek, west of Stanley Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June 8, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Mr. Hurlovich, could you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This application is for a property on the south side of Lyons Creek Road at the foot of Stanley Avenue. The property is a zoning amendment for 0.32 hectares of land to allow for a single detached dwelling. The property is vacant at the current time. The property is zone conservation open space, which doesn't permit a dwelling, and the request is for the property to be rezoned R1A residential, single-family, 1A density, in part, and in part, environmental protection area. The property to the north of this is vacant, to the northeast is the Oakland Golf Course. There are residential properties on either side of this property, and the property backs onto Lyons Creek. The proposal is to construct a single detached dwelling. It's outlined in red on the map. Lyons Creek Road is at the top, and the property has a frontage of 54 meters. They're proposing that they would have a side yard on the east side of 8.7 meters, a building height of seven meters. There's an existing flood line, it's shown in green. They're proposing that the flood line be altered, that's the line in black, so that there would be filling in this triangular area. That's an approval that they have permission through the Conservation Authority. The rear yard between the back of the building and the back lot line is 51 meters, but we're also looking for a setback between that new flood plain, which would be an EPA, Environmental Protection Area, of 1.47 meters. On the west side, they have a 22.6-meter-wide side yard proposed. This is also the area where the septic field would be located. Approximately 80% of the lot would be landscape, 20% of the lot is building. And the total lot area is 1,256 square meters. So in examining this application, it complies with the provincial policy statements. The property is in the built-up boundary for the city of Niagara Falls. The property is currently undeveloped, and it's an infill lot, and it would help in achieving the city's intensification target. The official plan has designated these lands in part residential and in part environmental protection. They want to, as I said, construct a single detached dwelling on the portion of the lands that are designated residential. The new house will fit with the character along there. The environmental protection area will correspond with the PSW, the provincially significant wetlands along the creek, and it also reflects the flood plain that I've mentioned. And I already mentioned the flood line will be altered through a cut-and-fill permit. The zoning for the property is currently zone conservation open space under the old Willoughby bylaws, 395. This property, this zoning will bring it under the Niagara Falls zoning bylaws, 79-200, as a R1A zone. The existing regulations are in the middle of the chart in front of you, and all of the dimensions that are proposed far exceed the minimum requirements for this property. We are setting the whole of the property as the minimum, so that the property couldn't be severed in the future. If they were just to use the R1A standards, because the property is not on municipal sewage system. The proposed zoning amendment can be supported because it exceeds all of the zoning requirements for that R1A zone. The rear yard depth of the property is 51 meters, and it protects 1.47 meters to the flood plain. The PSW and associated buffers are well away from the building and would be under the environmental protection zone. We will be placing this property with a holding provision. That's because the region is looking for an archaeological stage-two study. It's quite common where properties are located next to watercourses to require such study be undertaken. Therefore, we file the property, the proposal does comply with provincial and regional regulations. The Conservation Authority has found that there is no negative impact. The property is designated residential in part and environmental in part. The requested zoning will implement those official plan designations. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment to rezone the lands as residential, single-family, R1A, and environmental protection EPA zone, with a holding provision for the stage-two archaeological study. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. Are there any questions from members of council? Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign in, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section thirty-four nineteen of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Anyone other than the applicant that wishes to speak? Seeing now, none, council, I'm sorry. Would you please come forward? Come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Leslie Tanner. I own the property directly south of the proposed property across the creek. And my question is more on the environmental side. I didn't quite understand, is it a dual residential and environmental protected area? Because I have environmental protected area along the creek, and I was just wondering what would the new property or the new zoning be on the creek?
Mr. Hurlavich?
Yes, Mr. Acting Mayor, to you, to the speaker. So the environmental protection will be, if you look at the map, everything that's on the left side, there's a green line that jogs up into a point. That point will be filled in, and they will come straight across. So the green line following the dark black line, and then back to the green line. So everything between there and the creek itself will be environmental protection. So this is the shore, the bank of Lyons Creek. So all of this area will be environmental protection. It will only be the front lands next to the road that are zoned for residential purposes. One house right there, the septic field is right there. There's really not much room for even putting a dog run.
There's, so there's no buildings going to be in that flood plain?
No. I'm not sure that anybody would want to build in a flood plain, but no, no buildings.
Because if it's environmental, you can't build in there as long as it's stained. I'm asking because I don't know.
There will be no buildings in the EPA zone.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, we are proposing to this, it's going to be a retirement bungalow, basically. It's a simple structure, just a one-story. We will, of course, not touch the EPA zone at all. We're well aware of that, and we hope you approve.
Okay. Are there any final questions from council regarding the application? Seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. That we've moved the recommendation. Are there any questions? I'm left-handed. Any questions? All in favor? Carried unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you, could you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a two-and-a-half-story, six-unit apartment building on lots seventy-nine and eighty of Plan 193. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June 8, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. Mr. Planning Director, could you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed amendments?
Yes, so for council, this application involves three blocks of land on the west side of Kayla Road, just above Brown. So Brown Road is here, Kayla Road is here, this is Niagara Square, Wego Building is just off the map. This is the Warren Woods Plan of Subdivision. The, so again, the three parcels of land all front onto the west side of Kayla Road, between McLeod and Brown Road. The lands to the west are developed for residential purposes. The lands to the east are partially wetlands and partially developed for residential purposes. So there are three parcels outlined, so we'll step you through that. The applications before you tonight are for both a zoning change and vacant land plan of condominium. So the most northerly block would have thirty-one townhouse units and eight quadruplex units. So the townhouses are shown in yellow. The quadruplex units are in blue. They're basically townhouse units. In this location, would that blind anyone? Basically, townhouse units, the four units back onto each other. So the, the next block to the south are for thirty-eight townhouse units. They would be served from an internal driveway, and the, there's currently construction trailers on this and a detached dwelling which will be demolished. The most southerly of the three parcels would have thirty-seven townhouse units. They're looking for, again, a site-specific zoning, served through an internal road system. The SciTech was circulated because of the policies in our official plan, and there's an arc that moves through a part of this property. SciTech has requested that the building heights be limited to ten meters or three stories on parcel one, and the lesser of ten meters or two-and-a-half stories on parcels two and three. And they also would like a warning clause in any of the sales agreements, which would accompany them to let them know that there is a major industry nearby. That's fairly standard clause. We did have an open house on May twenty-second. Fifteen people came out. They were largely concerned about the shortage of parkland in the Warren Woods area. What was explained, there's a small parquet in the Phase One of Warren Woods. There's to be a major parkland in Phase Five, which is just to the west of the Warren Creek. The, they did talk about the amount of traffic going down Kayla Road, and staff said they would be looking at traffic calming and sidewalks on Kayla Road as part of an ongoing study. The official plan calls for these lands to be developed with medium-density housing. The targeted range is fifty to seventy-five units a hectare. This project is actually slightly under that, at thirty-six to thirty-nine units a hectare. The, but there are some alternative guidelines in our Warren, or our Garner South Secondary Plan, which provides that they could have a density of fifty-three people and jobs per hectare. When you combine the three plans together, they actually would be achieving fifty-five jobs and persons per hectare, which would satisfy the overall requirement of somewhere between fifty and seventy-five. The units that front onto Kayla Road will be developed with a facade that looks out onto the streets, so rather than the backs of the building, the front will be facing the street, although the units themselves will be accessed from the internal portion of the site. So again, looking at Block One, it's currently zoned R4 with a special provision, eight fifty-six. So they were looking to alter eight fifty-six. They want to delete the apartment use. They only want to develop with townhouses and the quadruplex units that I mentioned earlier. They would have a block coverage of forty percent, whereas the standard R4 zone is thirty-five percent. They are looking for a three-story height, which would comply with SciTech's request. Their height would be thirteen point five meters for the townhouses and fifteen meters for the quadruplexes, but that includes the peaked roofs. So that would be a requirement under the zoning that they have peaked roofs. The, there are roofed, one-story porches, which actually approach into the side yard areas of the, of the property, and so they're looking to, they're allowed to go two-point three meter, or two-point five meters into that yard. They would like to go three meters, which is just under ten feet, and we're supporting that, provided they have a minimum of one point five meters from any lot line. That's the same as the, it's actually a little higher than the side yard that we typically require between a, a single detached dwelling and, and a lot line. The, excuse me, so looking at the apartment use, they're going to replace those with quadruplexes, so we're satisfied that they could remove that. They're going to maintain the separation distances, and the townhouse units would have a height of three meters, or three stories, rather, which is the same as what's currently allowed. The actual height itself would be only slightly larger than what is currently permitted by the zoning bylaw. On the second parcel, they're basically looking for very similar provisions. It's currently zoned development holding, and they would be zoning that as an R4 zone, again, to delete the apartment use. They would increase the coverage from thirty-five percent to forty percent, and again, they have roofed-over porches, which would project into the required yard areas, and again, maintain, would require that they maintain a one-point-five-meter setback. So again, you can see, they're looking to reduce the setback on Kayla Road from six meters to three point four, which we have allowed elsewhere in this community, as long as garages, but the garages are actually here. You can see the driveways internal to this, and there is a requirement at the rear yard that's reduced from seven point five to two point five for unit seven, just because of the angle on the property. This is where the storm fund is, and then there would be a side yard, building height from, for unit seventeen as well, of three point five meters. Again, we're supporting this because the apartment, the apartment use is not proposed on this site. The reduced setbacks for units nine and seventeen are due to the regular lot shape. The current height regulations are acceptable and should be limited to two point five meters, again, in accordance with SciTech's wishes. The last parcel, again, rezoning this property from an R4 special provision one thousand to a new R4 zone, again, deleting the apartment use, and then adding for the coverage of forty percent, restricting the height of the building to two-and-a-half stories, and to reduce the exterior side yard that's along Kayla Road from six meters to three point four meters. And as well, the, this one unit here, number seventeen, is actually a little bit closer. It's two point four meters, but it's just at the corner of the, the unit to the lot line, and so therefore, that is acceptable. The privacy yards are being reduced from seven point five meters. That's the area behind the buildings. That would be reduced to seven meters from seven point five, and then the, sorry, that's over here in this area. And then, again, the requirement for the roofed-over porches to project into any yard. Again, we are supporting all of those requested changes. The, those are the zone changes. The application is subject to a condominium design, so again, this is a vacant land condominium. That will allow each of the units to be sold separately. There are a number of conditions that would have to be fulfilled. Those are attached to the report. One of the requirements is that the units that front onto Kayla Road would have façades that look like the front of the building. The typical conditions would be the site plan controller addressed through the condominium agreement, and there's a requirement that the driveway on parcel two be shifted slightly southward from the north property line to provide for snow storage. Therefore, the application does conform with provincial and regional policies. It conforms with our official plan for Garner South, provides appropriate development standards for the form of condominium proposed, and addresses the city's and regional interests. Therefore, we are recommending that the vacant land of condominium be draft-approved, subject to the conditions and the appendices, that the mayor is designate be authorized to sign the draft plans as approved after twenty days of notice, and that the draft approval be given for a period of three years. The mayor and the clerk would be authorized to execute the condominium agreement, and the application to amend the zoning as outlined are all to be carried out. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlavich. Are there any questions of Mr. Hurlavich from any members of council? Counselor Crater?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just have one short question, Alex, because I am asked about this by the public. In that section that you referred to, forty, forty percent to thirty-five percent, so what, what the general public ask me is, like they say, if you go to Kayla Road, I'm just trying what they tell me, if you go to Kayla Road, you can jump from house to house here, that close together, because you don't get. One fellow said to me, if I yell out my way, the whole street will hear you, because everything is so close. So I'm just, what I'm asking you, when I support this, am I agreeing how this gets closer together and less land in between? Is that what we're doing? When we go that thirty-five, you're like thirty-five to forty. Is that what we're doing?
When we're going, to you, your worship, when we're going from thirty-five percent coverage to forty percent coverage, it means the houses are getting bigger, because they're townhouses, they're all attached to each other anyway. So, but they're basically larger, and because there are covered porches, it used to be in the old days, people just wanted an outdoor deck. They were happy to have the sunshine. They now want to be able to use that on rainy days as well. And once you put a roof over a deck, we count that as lot coverage. So that's typically where the lot coverage gets bumped up. It's not because the units are getting closer to the lot line, it's because they're covering the deck with a roof.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you.
Any other members of council have question for Mr. Hurlavich? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at the public meeting. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed amendment. Anyone other than the applicant. Would you please come forward and state your name and address?
My name is David Lep. I live at eighty-four ninety-two Sweet Chest Court, about four blocks from the proposed area. I could go home, I could put on a suit, but I don't feel I need to. Hopefully, I can appeal to you as a human being. I live in this community, my wife and I both. There was mention made of not enough parkland. At this point in time, Empire has made, I believe, one little park area for children. We take our grandkids there. Sorry? Oh, sorry. Much more of that needs to be done by the Empire community, if I may say that. We do not strike back at the Empire. In our neighborhood, there is a term investors, which is a new term to us. We're not talking about eighteen hundreds going to Nevada and buying a silver mine. We have investors who come to our community, our, our neighborhood, and what we find is that investors come from the GTA, shall we say. Many of them do not share our community in that we own lawn mowers, we dig gardens, we try to maintain our neighborhoods. Within eye shot of where my wife and I live, there are two Airbnb's, one of whom is a renter. He does not own the property, and he has Airbnb. He does not own the property, and he has, uh, Airbnb residence. Uh, someone from Niagara Falls Municipal Department came and, uh, contacted him. He, uh, said he does not have an Airbnb. Uh, the person asked, why do you have a lockbox on your front door? His response was, um, uh, it was there when I got here, I don't know how to get it off. He had not mown his lawn, uh, in the entire year and a half that he had been there. Uh, your bylaw officer then said he should mow his lawn. He said, I'm an environmentalist. Well, I looked up environmentalist in my dictionary, and it said, uh, lazy and do not own a lawnmower. However, uh, the bylaw officer said, you need to mow your lawn by such and such a date, or the city of Niagara Falls will, uh, add it to your landlord's, uh, tax bill, which I get, I'm cool with that. Uh, he, he hired a neighbor to mow his lawn. Um, he had, uh, a weed in his lawn that is, well, it's about this high. It's no longer there, but that's the situation. Uh, we have a number of investors in our neighborhood. Uh, not enough, um, parkland for our children, grandchildren, I'd, I'll give you that. Um, and, and as I say, I don't have my suit on, I can't do, uh, my seven-point-five, uh, meters to seven meters. Uh, I'm just speaking to you as a human being who wants to live in a Niagara Falls neighborhood. Um, does Niagara Falls want to have, uh, we don't need more Clifton Hill, I mean, that works, the casinos work, but if we want to have a place where people want to come, where they want to live, it, it, it shouldn't all be rentals with people who do not own a lawnmower. That's, that's, that's a pretty shortened excuse, but, um, when we, when we talk about, when we were told about our medium-density living, uh, when we moved to Niagara Falls in good faith, did we want really, really high-density living? Uh, I, I don't know. I, I, I beg of the city of Niagara Falls, I ask of you folks who are representatives, is this what you want? Do you want people coming here?
Sorry, no, we're good.
Okay, yeah. Uh, I noticed my, uh, my counterpart is making notes. Uh, again, I do have nice clothes if I need them.
Yeah, Mr. Lep, I don't think anyone cares.
Um, however, uh, I, I, I believe I've made my point, and I do want to take up more of your time, but, um, I've expressed the opinion of myself, my wife, and many of our neighbors. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Hurlivick, is there anything there that you can answer?
Well, I guess about the only thing that I would respond is that, um, these units are, will be condominium developments, which means that the owners will be paying, uh, their, um, their common expenses, and so typically those are, the properties themselves are managed by a management company that comes in and plows the grass and, or plows the snow and cuts the grass. Um, so it could be that someone could buy a unit there as an investor, they're still going to pay their, uh, condominium corporation fees, those fees are going to go into that kitty. Um, so I would hope that these properties would be well-maintained. Um, I can't guarantee that somebody might not buy them, uh, whether they live in town or out of town, um, and rent them to somebody else. Um, the people who are renting there, uh, for the most part are living there, um, and our enforcement officer, as the speaker said, are going out and trying to get these, um, Airbnb's closed down. Been successful with many, some are less cooperative, and obviously, one who is, uh, renting is somewhat removed from the actual owner, uh, may be a little more difficult, but we'll get it over time.
And the only other, the only other thing is that the property standards, uh, bylaw officers, that's not unique to this area, they do that all over our city.
That's correct.
Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, counselor?
Your worship, if I could just ask a question on a point that was brought up, uh, and I agree, there are a lot of investors coming from Toronto area, buying into new buildings in our community. Is there a message being sent out or a condition in the, uh, building permit that says that these facilities cannot be used as Airbnb's?
Mr. Hurlivick?
Typically, that wouldn't be a condition of a, a building permit, because that would be governed by the, uh, building code itself, so, um, but, but our bylaw enforcement office is fairly adamant. I think, you know, through the meetings that we've had with this council, I would say a year ago, I got a few, a handful of complaints. Um, I get a handful of complaints every day from people saying that there's one next to them, across the street from them, down the street from them, um, photographs of cars and partyers. Um, so our enforcement officer is, is working hard to, uh, to get it under hand.
To that point, I realize on the agenda tonight, we're, we're hiring two new bylaw enforcement officers, but in my mind, based on my feedback and the, the complaints I get, uh, from Airbnb situations, we need more than two bylaw officers. But I think would be really important, any new construction going on, we need to set the, set the message out there that these facilities cannot be used for Airbnb if they are in an illegal area.
Okay, we'll try and get that message out.
Counselor Crater?
Uh, thank you. Uh, through you, to the gentleman, that was a great presentation.
Mr. Lep?
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple things. Um, I know we were, you know, today we're just dealing with the land matter and the development. I understand what you're saying. For example, uh, I wasn't going to bring this up, across the street from where I live, they sold the house. Guess what the house is now? Guess what I see every day at my neighbors? It's now an Airbnb. And I didn't quite understand, I wouldn't have understood when you talked about the lock, except I went over to the house to take a look at it, because the grass is this high now, and it's a shame to see it. In the backyard, it's a jungle now, but you're right, they had this big lock on it. And then we started watching in the last two weeks, people coming in, just going out, uh, constantly, and so, the point I'm making is, when you see all these developments come on board, you know, you've got, but that's it. Sadly, that's exactly what you said is happening. There is more and more people that are buying the homes, who are not living in them, and they're, become Airbnb's. And today, before I came up to the in-camera meeting, I stopped to say hello to a friend of mine, and I said, how are you doing? There he was, standing at the, uh, at the bylaw office, and what he's upset about is, he lives at a condominium, one of the people who live in it has now made it into an Airbnb, and the owner of the condominium has said, if you want to deal with this, you go to the city of Niagara Falls, they have the bylaw. I don't have any authority over this, and he's still going to keep, we're having his parties and his, now that, and parties and all the other activities, and that's a condominium. That's a condominium. And I said to him, yeah, but it's in a condominium, the owner of the condominium has jurisdiction. He said, no, the owner says, it's the city of Niagara Falls. They enforce the bylaws, they don't allow these things, and they're in certain areas, they allow them, in other areas they don't. We're in an area where they don't allow it, so the city should be able to say, this is a fraction of the city bylaw, shut it down. So here he was in City Hall, and when you see Gerald, who's done a great job, uh, for the city, and he, he has to present all this evidence, he's got to give the evidence, because we got to take him to court. And now, this is digressing from why we're here. We're here because we've got an application for a land proposal, but what you brought up is happening more and more throughout this whole city, uh, whether it's the new development or the existing development. People are suffering because people next to them are running businesses that they shouldn't in illegal operations. I know we're getting off the topic, but I just want to tell the gentleman, you made a good presentation, congratulations.
Yeah, is there anyone?
If I may, I, a buddy of mine is a councillor in the city of Oshawa, and he said the federal government bumped it to the provincial, provincial bumped it to municipal, it's now your, it's yours to deal with, um...
Yeah, the only thing is, Mr. Lep, this is a planning meeting, this is really not a meeting about Airbnb's. So, like to get us back on track, is there anyone else? Anyone, anyone else, other than the applicant who wishes to speak on the planning amendment? Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant, or his or her representative.
Good evening. Uh, we submitted a slide deck for, uh, council this evening through the planning department. I'm not sure if the clerk has that.
Uh, sorry, I do not have that, it was not forwarded on to me.
Counselor?
Yeah, I just have a question for the applicant. Um, in regards to his, the last speaker's, uh, comments, and in council's package, we have a, a petition for a request for another smart, just wanted to give him a chance to get off his phone.
Oh, sorry, I'm sending the presentation to the clerk. My apologies.
Um, another, um, they're asking, they have a petition with a request for another small park or play area, because they don't think what they have is adequate. Are you going to be addressing that through your presentation?
Uh, no, I will not. Um, in, in regards to that, what I, what I can, uh, state is that, um, parkland dedication was already taken for part, uh, parcels one and three that have been outlined.
Okay.
Parcel two where the sales office is.
Okay.
Cash in lieu of parkland is being taken for that, with the understanding that that larger park that the director spoke about
Okay.
is being constructed in the near future, so that will satisfy the contribution of parkland by the developer.
So then through you to Mr. Holman, is that happening?
Yes.
When? That, just so that we could give him a timeframe? And the people in the petition?
Um, well, the, the land has been provided as part of Warren Woods Phase Five, and the, so once the land is donated to the, uh, given to the municipality, then we'll talk about the parkland, uh, the construction, what elements are included in the design of the parkland. Uh, so it's a bit of a timing issue in the short run, uh, but, uh, we could expect that the full park would be in place within the next year and a half of year.
Thank you, Mr. Holman, and what, that's what I wanted to make clear to the people who signed this petition, so that they didn't think by presenting it to us, they would have a park this summer or any time soon. So thank you, Mr. Holman.
Okay. Okay, um, evidently, uh, presentation was not loaded, um, and we can't get it on here. Uh, so, we had, uh, we had some images to show you, just to kind of speak to some of the, the concerns about, uh, that we heard this evening, especially about what the built form's going to look like, specifically what a quadruplex is going to look like, um, and we were hoping to share those with you, uh, this evening. So my apologies, I should have brought that on a USB stick. Um, I guess I'll have abbreviated, uh, presentation at this, at this point. The one thing that, that I would, I would add, I think the director was rather thorough in his presentation, um, is that there was that two-point-four meter setback pertaining to block two-twenty-nine, which is parcel three in your report. Um, it was acknowledged, uh, by the director that that is supported. Um, it's something that we flagged through our submission to the city, and we have some documentation through the zoning review, uh, and we are just directed to request of council that friendly amendment be passed on as part of, uh, any approval of this, to ensure that that gets into the bylaw, so that the, the unit can be built as, as proposed. Um, I can answer any further questions you have.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and plan of vacant land condominium is now concluded. Does any member of council wish to make a motion? Counselor Thompson, move the recommendations? We have a second here. Second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Are there any questions to the motion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Counselor Crater and Counselor Campbell oppose, motions carry. Mr. Kirk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda?
Yeah, uh, the planning script may sound familiar here, because I read it inadvertently for the previous application, but our planner did cover, uh, what was being proposed to be permitted and at the, uh, proper locations. So, planning meeting number three is a planning, is a public meeting now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a two-and-a-half-story, six-unit apartment building on lots seventy-nine and eighty of Plan One-Ninety-Three. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who would like notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Mr. Hurlivick, would you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The, uh, application is for a vacant, uh, parcel of land, it's actually two lots fronting onto the north side of McLeod Road. Uh, immediately to the east is a church parking lot, and, uh, the, uh, Lutheran Church just on the edge of that parking lot. The lots had been owned by the church at one point, they are zoned currently institutional. To the east and to the north are single detached dwellings. To the south are, is a Kojicow building and commercial properties. The Hydro Power Canal is just to the west, and the QEW interchange just west of that. Um, the proposal is to rezone the property, uh, that is the two lots, there's, in the darker grayish color here, uh, to rezone those lots from an institutional zone to a site-specific R-five-A zone to permit a two-and-a-half-story, six-unit, uh, apartment building. The, uh, proposal is, uh, the two lots are currently vacant, uh, has a lot area of, uh, almost a little over a quarter of an acre. The original intent was that the lots would be developed for single detached dwellings, um, however, that has not happened, and the, uh, applicant had previously applied to this council for a car wash on these lands. That application was denied by council in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, staff's review of that application had suggested that, uh, the site was appropriate for, uh, an apartment building up to six units. Um, the, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting in June, uh, we had nine residents come out, they had concerns about the fact that the property would be, uh, used as a rental property, and, um, the, uh, and the impact that renters may have in their neighborhood. However, we would note that the city's vacancy rate has dropped to, uh, one-point-eight percent, uh, so there is a need for rental properties in the city. The applicant noted that the, uh, units themselves will be geared towards seniors. The, uh, provincial policy statement and provincial growth plan, uh, both, uh, encourage the city to intensify their, um, urban lands, and we have a, uh, requirement that we have, uh, forty percent of our new units built within our built-up boundaries, um, and this unit would, uh, this development would have, um, uh, would facilitate doing, doing that as well, that would make more efficient use of our existing infrastructure, and it provides an alternative form of housing at the edge of a neighborhood which is predominantly low-density housing. The, uh, official plan is, has the lands designated residential. McLeod Road is a arterial road, and the densities, uh, along arterial roads, uh, range from fifty to seventy-five units. Um, this proposal would have a density of fifty-four units per hectare, so just slightly above, uh, the minimum expected. The proposed building height is, uh, consistent with what is permitted through zoning on the surrounding properties, um, and the, uh, there are additional setbacks, so if this was a single-family house, for instance, uh, it could be ten meters in height, would have one-point-five meter, or one-point-two meter side yards, and seven-point-five meter rear yards, so these, uh, setbacks are slightly greater than that. Um, the, uh, as well, we reduced the number of entrances onto McLeod Road, because there's a, a single, uh, parking lot in front of the building, and as I said, it will address the shortage of parking in the city. So, looking at the site plan, the building itself is here, straddling the two single lots, so the, this would be the lot line coming through here, one lot and two lots. So they've maintained, uh, the greatest distance, which is one-half the building height, on the west, where there's a single detached dwelling, and they pushed the building to the east, because there is a parking lot here, and therefore, less impact. less impact. The property has a nine-meter rear yard proposed. If this was a single-family house, the minimum could be 7.5 meters. So it is higher than that, although it's slightly short of the 10 meters by both three They're also asking for relief. We typically have a requirement for a wall along parking lots, but we're suggesting that it would be acceptable to have a landscape berm instead of a wall as a change in the zoning. So that, those are the changes site specifically and for the R5A zone on this property. The current density provisions would support 5.5 units on the property. They've rounded that to six units, which was fairly standard. The rear yard depth is nine meters, I mentioned. However, we do not believe there would be a measurable impact. These two lead property lines, or lot line, about the parking lot, and we can use plantings to screen that. Because those are two, they are two lots in a registered plan of subdivision, we do need to deem those not to be lots so they can be operated as one property for the proposed development. And we would bring that deeming bylaw back with this zoning amendment. So, we found that the development does conform with provincial and regional policies. Proposed development conforms with the city's official plan with respect to the type of units, the density of units, the form of housing that's proposed, and that we would expect on an arterial road. Requested R5A zone permits apartment buildings, and the requested site-specific regulations are appropriate to ensure the development will be compatible with the surrounding properties. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment to an R5A zone, permit a two-and-a-half-story, six-unit apartment building subject to the conditions I outlined, and that council approve the request to pass a bylaw to deem lots 79 and 80 not to be lots in that subdivision. Those are the highlights.
Any questions of Mr. Hurlovic from members of council? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Anyone other than the applicant, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Rogers, and I live at 7149 McLeod Road. Your Excellency and City Council members, I am here this evening on behalf of my neighbors and residents in the community regarding the rezoning of the above lots to accommodate a two-and-a-half-story, six-unit apartment building on the above land. We oppose this proposal for the following reasons. With this building right next to our property, we are concerned the value of our homes will depreciate and make it difficult for resale if and when we choose to move. The extra traffic congestion caused from six more residents plus their guests visiting on an already very congested thoroughfare will make it more difficult to exit our driveways. We are concerned that our view of the street will be obstructed even more from the higher traffic flow. There are already enough accidents on our street from the entrances and exits to the existing commercial buildings, and this change would make it an even higher traffic accident risk area. The road widening will encroach so close to our home that the traffic will be even closer to our front door. This already causes problems with vibrations of our home as well as our plumbing when vehicles drive by. We stand to lose a portion of our already small driveway and frontal property. Significant damage has already been caused to our home from the construction taking place in the past year. During my last discussion with the region, I was told that a special type of pavement was going to be used to cut down on noise and vibration, but at a significant cost. If this was too costly, then they would be removing our homes, and we would not have an answer to this question to this until 2019. I was told at the meeting in June that the city planning department would try and get information on this, but did not hear anything back regarding it. I wouldn't want to see someone spend their hard-earned money on building an apartment building to see it torn down in a year. If anyone could shed light on this, that would be great. We cannot afford to suffer any more green loss in our city. McLeod Road is a gateway to the city and casino off of the highway. Is this the impression we want to give our visitors? They will be greeted with little to no green space as they arrive. All of the neighbors on the block are deeply concerned about this proposal going forward and are against it. If this proposal does pass, we would like you to consider the following for the residents. Please assure us that the city planning department and council will receive a copy of the site plan before it is put forward for approval. We would like to be assured that the property will not be sold and rezoned at a higher level and have something else built. We have seen this happen in the past and don't want it to happen in this situation. At the very least, give us, the residents, a guarantee that this will not be the case if you don't see fit to oppose this bylaw change. Thank you for considering our concerns. Sincerely, the residents of properties surrounding Lots 79 and 80. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurlovic, would you like to address the concerns? Or any of the questions that you can address?
I don't have any real, excuse me, response to that. McLeod Road is a major road. It's a regional road. You know, the speaker probably is more familiar with the timing. She spoke about road widening. I don't know when the region is going to widen this portion of McLeod Road. I don't know anything about the pavement, and I'm not sure what the promise was that my staff might have made in June about getting her additional information about the road pavement. I didn't understand that. So I really can't answer her questions.
Okay. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? Anyone other than the applicant? Come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Vodavaz. I'm the owner of the property. And I think, I think the greatest concern with the neighbors...
The owner of the property?
Yeah. I'm the owner of the property, yes.
The property in question?
Yeah, the property in question, yes.
We're not ready for you yet, sorry.
Other than the applicant?
Okay, sorry.
Anyone else other than the applicant?
Okay, sorry.
Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant. This is my first time in a long time, I'm sorry.
I think one of the major concerns here was actually parking. And, you know, we talked about this being an issue in the past, that, you know, putting a resident over there and trying to back up on McLeod Road is nearly impossible. So we took the liberty of, you know, pushing the, making a driveway at the front of the property, having four, eight parking spots in total, kind of throwing it to the right of the property, and providing a turnaround radius that would be sufficient and safe for the occupants to kind of get out of that property. With the proper setbacks, allowing for future development, okay? Should region decide to widen the road, we allow for that as well. And, I'm not opposed, you know, to, and I'm not, I don't like the landscaping in the front because I think it would block views from the driveways from people backing up for the neighbors specifically. But, you know, if council wants, I mean, if planning wants that, I'm for it. So, so those issues seem to be the greatest of the issues, and those are the ways they have been addressed. Okay?
Okay. Are there any final questions from council regarding the application? Counselor Crater?
I just had a question through you to Tom. Susan had mentioned, I just want to get your thoughts on this. She had mentioned that if it moves forward, you're moving it forward, am I correct? That's what she said. Sure development, you're going to go with it, that's why you're going to... The other thing is, and I told the residents, because they called me, I said, you moved forward with this proposal because after the first one was turned down for the car wash, when you went to the city, they gave you direction of what could be allowed. And this is one of the things that the city recommends. If you're going to go ahead, this is one of the things that fits there. So that's why you came back with this. The last thing was, would you feel uncomfortable if part of the motion that we make includes the fact that when the site plan is put together, which is how the building's going to be laid out and everything around with it, that the residents have a chance to look at it and have some input in it? Because normally, they don't. Once we pass this, then it stays inside City Hall, and residents don't have some, an opportunity to at least look at it. Would you feel uncomfortable if that was put into the motion, if they have that opportunity to take a look at it?
You know what? I'm not opposed to that at all. You know, I'm okay with it all. I'm trying to go with, I mean, I have to do something with the land. I mean, I'm not going to let the land sit. So I'm kind of going with, you know, the direction of council and the planning department. And that's why I'm moving it forward, because something's got to go there. And, you know, I think the suggestion by planning was good. And so I thought, you know, this is a perfect building, perfect size. I tried to, you know, fit, fit it in, and tried to convenience everyone by pushing it to the right, away from the neighbors on the left, so there wouldn't be a noise problem that way. And I don't think I could have made a better plan than what we put together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Counselor Strange?
Yes, you, Mr. Mayor, and to Tom, just a little disappointed you didn't have your drone footage tonight.
Yes, yes. You know, you liked that last time. Maybe next time.
The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Does a member of council wish to make a motion regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? Moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange. Are there any questions? Counselor Crater?
I would like to see if we could include the...
Okay with the mover? Okay with the second? That residents be involved in the site plan?
Site plan. Thank you, thank you, Wayne.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Mr. Clerk, could you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Yes, moving on to our fourth planning public meeting, which is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the establishment of a gasoline bar on the west side of Victoria Avenue between 4835 and 4893 Victoria. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June 14th, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who would like notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovic. Could you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The proposal is to add a gasoline bar as one of the permitted uses to the GC zone to develop the property with a car wash, retail store, and a gasoline bar. The property is currently zoned general commercial, and the retail store and car wash are already allowed on the site. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on June 4th. Two people attended. One of the residents across the street where on Second Avenue was concerned about additional flows getting into the sewers. The car wash will require that there be an onsite storage for the water to be released slowly into the storm sewer. And municipal works have confirmed that there would be then no impact from this development. The other concern came from one of the convenience stores owners who was concerned about the number of retail stores that were permitted. As I say, a retail store is already allowed. The property itself is this irregular-shaped property in blue. It's right across from our city's public library. Tim Hortons is to the north, accounting offices to the south. There's a long condominium building here and a vacant residential property in this location, and then single detached dwellings basically on the north side of Wilmot Street. The proposed development then is for a driveway entrance onto Victoria Avenue and another driveway onto Valley Way. There would be three gas pumps underneath a canopy on the property and a retail store towards the southerly extent of the lot, parking for anyone using that store. And again, anybody paying for gas, they would come into the store and they would pay in the store. The car wash is located on the western part of the property, and they are providing the required number of stacking for cars to enter that car wash. This would be an automated car wash. The door would enter once you punch in the code, and the car would leave in this direction. So the door would be closed once the car enters the building and then exits the building. Initially, the car wash is posed right against the lot line. They did move it about three and a half meters away. They've increased the amount of landscaped open space. As well, a noise study was submitted so that there will be noise walls along the property line. There'll also be some acoustic barriers on the roof of the buildings for the mechanical services, which I'll outline a little bit later. This strange tracking pattern is actually how the gas delivery vehicles would enter the site. The tanks, underground tanks are in this location, and the trucks would then exit the site onto Valley Way. The property is currently vacant. The provincial planning act and the provincial policy statements do require that we make more efficient use of our urban lands and to make use of our public infrastructure and services. There are adequate municipal services and infrastructure to accommodate this development. The official plan designates the lands as minor commercial. The zoning amendment will meet the intent of the official plan as the commercial use serves the local residents and businesses. It fronts onto an arterial road where our policies encourage service stations, gas bars, and car washes. The development also provides significant areas of landscape to compensate for the area which is required for onsite vehicle movements. The noise study I mentioned, so a four-meter-high sound barrier next to the condo apartment building at 4866 Valley Way, a five-meter sound barrier at the entrance and exits of the car wash, which would be the noisiest areas of the building, and then a 2.2-meter-high rooftop barrier to screen the car wash mechanical equipment, and a two-meter rooftop acoustical screen on top of the retail store to screen the mechanical equipment located there. As I said, the property is already zoned GC. It permits a gas, a car wash, and a retail store, so they're adding the gasoline bar, which is basically this portion of the development. As well, we would be requiring, I mentioned this, the two-and-a-half-meter fence along the residential property. The condo building is right here. There are some other houses in this location and the accounting office on the corner. We're looking for an interior side yard width of 2.7 meters instead of six meters as required for car washes. And then the interior side yard is five meters, or 2.9 meters rather than five meters as required by the gas station AS zone. The zoning amendment can be supportive because there'd be minimal noise impact because of the mitigation measures that are recommended. And I've already talked about the walls and the acoustical screens a couple times. I mentioned the gasoline. Delivery trucks will come from Victoria and exit onto Valley Way. There are times where delivery are to be limited between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Delivery would be once or twice a week. City's engineering division is satisfied that stormwater management servicing and grading can be accommodated. The setback of 2.9 meters for the gasoline, it's a kiosk, but it's that store. You pay for your gas inside that store. It would be located within the retail store. Retail store, if they just build a retail store in the GC zone, there is actually no minimum setback for a retail store per se. The north wall of the adjacent apartment building is brick. There are no balconies or windows. And the east wall has only a few small windows, there's several small windows. There's no parking in that. uh, area. And there's an amenity area on the, uh, site plan for this development. Uh, site plan will, uh, address the site layout, the servicing, the grading, the storm water, uh, any mitigation matters, the lighting on the site, the landscaping and, and signage. Um, excuse me, it's, uh, a number of whole and part lots, uh, on a planned subdivision. So again, we need a deeming bylaw passed that would be done on the same night as the, uh, amending zoning bylaws actually presented to you. And, uh, we would deem these not to be lots, so that there is no conflict between, uh, buildings straddling lot lines. Um, therefore, the proposal does conform with provincial and regional policies. It will serve local, uh, residents and businesses. Uh, it does front onto an arterial road where we expect these kinds of uses and where vehicular movement can be minimized. Uh, the building has been demonstrated to, uh, mitigation measures will adequately address the impact of the car wash. The site design provides for adequate landscaping and screening from adjacent residential properties. And site plan control will be used on the site design and mitigation measures. Therefore, staff is recommending that council approve the zoning amendment application to add the gasoline bar on the vacant lands at 4835 and 4895, uh, 93 Victoria, with the provision of the four-meter noise wall along the westerly lot line, and that council be, um, um, approve the request for the, uh, deeming bylaw, um, on, on the next council agenda. So those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovic. Any questions of members of council? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have some serious concerns about the, uh, gasoline trucks going up Valley Way. There's, uh, schools along there. It's very busy with a lot of, uh, children back and forth to school. I noticed that in the recommendation, there was some, uh, uh, request that they be limited to certain hours. I would prefer those hours not to be during the, the times that school is in operation. Um, if it was on the weekend, I, I think that that would, uh, take away some of my concerns. Uh, it's, it's, uh, going to change the whole neighborhood with respect to that type of traffic. And I know it's only once or twice a week, but, uh, Valley Way is not something that should be, uh, have, uh, gasoline trucks running up and down it.
Carl?
Thank you. If I can address it, uh, in the report, it, it's, uh, it's really a path from, uh, Bridge Street. So they're coming in off of a bridge along Victoria into the facility and then back, turning a right onto Valley Way, not left. We would restrict that. We wouldn't allow trucks to go that way because that is a school zone and there's, uh, residents in that area. So what it would do is it would go back towards Victoria again, make a left, back to Bridge, and then back to the highway.
I'd have to look at the, is that's what we have right up here?
Yeah, that's, that's what it's indicating.
Okay. So where's, where are the gasoline trucks coming in?
They would come, so they would come off of Bridge Street. They'd make a right onto, uh, onto Victoria, and they'd come along Victoria, make a, a right into the facility, drop off the gas, come out of the facility, turn right onto Valley Way, head back towards Victoria, make a left onto Victoria, and then left onto the bridge, and they would go out to the highway. Back to Stanley and then off to the highway. So the intent is not to have them go through the residential area of Valley Way.
Help me understand where, uh, Tim Hortons is there.
It's right next door.
Which next door?
Sorry, Alex will point it out.
Go back to the other slide. There you go.
Right there.
All right. So the truck lady can track them, move it on there and on.
So it's going to come in from, it's going to come out.
Come down Victoria.
Yeah.
Through the site here.
Yeah.
North on Valley Way, back to Victoria. And I think your concern would be going past in front of St. Patrick's, uh, School. Is that your concern?
I didn't see that on that other map. That other map showed, showed them going up Valley Way towards, uh, uh, second, third, and fourth.
But well.
No, not well. Go back, go back to that other, uh, it's got them going up Valley Way.
Right. So the traffic is coming in from Victoria.
Yeah.
The library's here. And so it turned, so if you pick up your copy of Tim Hortons, you're driving right there along the same property line, and you're exiting in front of the building. This, the trucks are going to come in from Victoria, travel in this direction, and go out. Just a little arrow symbol's here, showing the direction of the truck movements.
So it goes past the old review buil-, uh, the Niagara Falls Review Building? It goes in that direction?
Niagara Falls Review Building's here, and the gas station on the corner's here.
Okay. So it won't be going past the schools?
Not, uh, no.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was confused.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Anyone other than the applicant that wishes to speak. Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Mr. George?
Uh, good evening, Your Worship, Pro Tempore, and members of council, staff, and the general public. I'm just here to answer any questions. We're obviously in support of the application. I should point out that, uh, my client has made considerable efforts in working with, uh, planning staff to accommodate all the concerns, including many revisions of the building location to increase the amount of side yard. We've also committed to, in fact, uh, increasing the access to the, uh, sewers and, uh, water, um, pipe, pipes across of the, uh, street to Victoria, which is a fairly expensive, um, project, but it will accommodate the extra water flow, including, uh, the water tanks that were designed on the property as well, so that it would be, uh, a staggered release into the system. So it won't affect any of the residential areas, um, to the, uh, west of the, the property. And as, uh, Counselor Campbell, uh, pointed out in his concerns, uh, the design features were, uh, put that way to incorporate turning in front of the review building, not back into the residential area, and then back out onto the main, um, access roads. So if there's any question, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
Any questions from members of council, Mr. Ratchett? Seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Does a member of council wish to make a motion regarding the proposed? Moved, uh, by Counselor Crater, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Uh, the recommendation? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously? Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Mr. Clerk, could you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
Yes, the final, uh, planning public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to zone the land's site-specific resort commercial establishment in part, and environmental protection area in part, at 8215 Heartland Forest Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June 12th, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their names on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Planning Director, could you please explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The, uh, application involves the lands of, uh, Heartland Forest. Uh, they're approximately 200 acres, uh, south of Brown Road and on the west side of Heartland Forest Road. The proposal is to, uh, rezone a portion of the property as, um, recreational, commercial, and a portion of the property as environmental protection, um, which are the two zones that are currently on the property. Uh, the, uh, land holdings are approximately eight hun- eighty acre, or eighty hectares, 200 acres. The zoning amendment is to adjust the limits of the resort commercial and, uh, the environmental protection zones currently on the property to, uh, correspond with the official plan. The current zoning permits a comprehensive resort, um, development and protects the natural features on the, um, should say, western portion of the lands. Remain of the lands, uh, are heavy, um, and general industrial zones, and the zoning is being undertaken to satisfy condition of the committee of adjustment for corresponding severance of land. Um, so looking at this air photo, um, we can see this is a Warren Woods development up here. Brown Road, Kayla Road, Heartland Forest Road. This is the WeGo building here. Uh, the Interpretation Center is located here on Heartland's property, and, um, the whole holdings of, uh, Heartland Forest are these. A large portion of the westerly part of these are, uh, provisionally significant wetlands and designated as environmental protection in the official plan. Um, the lands to the south is this Thompson Creek, this wavy land, or line. These are lands that have been purchased by SciTech from Heartland, which necessitated this, uh, uh, zoning change. The, uh, uh, official plan then is, uh, does re- have requirements that the natural heritage features, uh, be protected. Uh, normally this is determined through an E I S. However, we are following the, uh, boundaries that were established by the Ministry of Natural Resources on their provincial mapping. Uh, the proposal complies with the city's, or with the region's official plan with respect to its natural heritage feature policies. Um, our city's official plan, so the, again, the property is, uh, this is Heartland Forest Road, Brown Road. So the largest part of the property is, um, provisionally significant wetlands and designated as environmental protection. The, um, red cross-hatched lands are resort commercial lands where it says S P A 35. These are the lands that were acquired by SciTech. Um, so the, uh, la- the lands in question are only for the Heartland Forest, uh, property. Um, the, uh, there is a setback of 1.09 kilometers from Garner Road. Uh, this is to protect the SciTech operations to the west. Uh, the resort commercial uses are therefore only allowed to the east of that arc. You'll see it on a, on another slide. The proposed zoning does comply with the official plan because the zoning would implement the official plan designations, uh, and respect the SciTech arc. The E P A and E C A features will be protected, um, and the buffer lands with, uh, passive uses that are currently, uh, approved by the N P C A, and resort commercial uses are limited to lands along Heartland Forest, uh, Road, and consist of the recreational, education facilities, uh, contemplated by the official plan, as well as a campground use. So the current zoning of those, the land, kind of have to look underneath these red lines, but there is a thin little strip of land which is desi- or zoned environmental protection. The bulk of the lands are actually zoned, uh, heavy industrial, which doesn't make any sense. Um, and then a portion of the lands are zoned general industrial in this location, and then we have resort commercial lands here on Heartland Forest. So the intent is to extend all of these lands, uh, along the frontage of Heartland Forest Road as a resort commercial, and then remove the heavy industrial zoning, uh, from the back half of the property and rezone that as environmental protection. So basically, the environmental protection, 655 zone that's on this little strip of land will be extended all the way back, and the R C E zone that's currently on this northerly portion will be extended all the way down to these lands. Um, the, uh, uh, as well, there is a holding provision in the, in the, uh, in the bylaw for, um, for storm services. Um, so we would be adding the recreational uses, um, to the list of uses, except for a skating rink, curling rink, or community center. Any indoor activity, um, would not be allowed, but basically some of the outdoor activities that have been developed over time, like the outdoor golf, the hiking trails, and so on, would all be allowed. We'd be defining the multipurpose building to include assembly hall, day nursery, place of entertainment, private club, restaurant, retail store, and city offices in recreational uses. Those are all the forms of uses that, uh, have occurred in there from time to time or do currently exist. As well, we would be permitting and restricting the trailer camp use to only be that area that's 279 meters south of, uh, Brown Road. So basically, the northeast corner of the Heartland's, uh, property. Uh, we would also be permitting accessory buildings. You might be aware that there are, um, various structures on the site as well. They're building some, uh, washrooms to serve the, uh, facility as well. Um, the, uh, in order to accommodate the, uh, the changes we're proposing, that this zoning would apply to the whole of the land, that is 200 acres. We'd have a minimum three-meter step back for the interior side yard. Uh, we define the maximum density height as 10 meters or three stories. Again, you can see that's consistent with SciTech's request. Uh, we increased the maximum accessory building floor area from 200 square meters to 262 square meters, and decreased the width of the landscaping strip along the, uh, Heartland Forest Road from 15 meters to five meters, and provide that there would be only one loading space. Uh, I mentioned the H provision is on there for storm water facilities. That would be with respect to new structures. That's largely the campground, which is the, about the only use that's not currently developed under the zoning. Um, again, the environmental protection, um, zone will maintain the lands in a natural state. Will recognize the existing trails and walkways, small-scale buildings that are already existed. Any other future facilities will require the approval of the N P C A, uh, in order that they can ensure the ecological functions of the, uh, site are not further affected. Uh, therefore, staff found that this, uh, application does conform with, uh, provincial policies, um, with respect to protection of the natural heritage. It implements the official plan designations, satisfies the condition imposed by the committee of adjustment, and the proposed site-specific R C E and E P A zones recognize the existing use and provides appropriate regulations. Therefore, we're recommending that council approves the zoning amendment, application to zone the site, uh, specific R C E zone in part and E P A zone in part, uh, subject to the regulations outlined in this report, and that council pass the amending, uh, bylaw that's included in tonight's agenda, and that council direct staff to initiate the changes to schedule A of the official plan to, uh, adjust the resort commercial establishment boundaries and the environmental protection designations as they pertain to these lands. Those are the highlights.
Any questions of Mr. Hurlovic from members of council? Seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Anyone other than the applicant? Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative, representative. Mr. Richardson?
I'm here this evening with Mr. Bowman, uh, and I'll be very brief, but I wanted to give you some background. This is really a tidying up of planning controls on this property. Some years ago, the council rezoned that portion that Mr. Hurlovic described as R C E, which permitted a multi-use building and all of the development that's occurred there outside of the woods. But in doing so, the balance to the west, the huge portion of the property was left zoned industrial. It's been preserved by Mr. Bowman, as you'll know, and developed in a way that, that's open to the public through walking trails and so on. So we were here to clean up that, that, uh, industrial zoning. More recently, uh, Mr. Bowman entered into a transaction with SciTech to sell the southerly portion of his lands, uh, which has created that straight-line boundary there. Everything between there and the, and I call it SciTech Creek, I guess it's Thompson's Creek, um, uh, has been sold to SciTech and, uh, which injected some money into Heartland Forest. But it also, SciTech demanded not only the land, but certain conditions with respect to the future development of the lands. And so the previous zoning permitted in the upper right-hand corner, a campground. There had at one point been a contemplation of a campground. SciTech has demanded that we reduce that area, and that's part of the regulation that's in the bylaw before you this evening. Um, and, uh, as indicated, the balance of the site is all to be zoned as an E P A area. Um, we've had ongoing negotiations with SciTech leading right up till today to be sure that it was in agreement with the bylaw that's being presented to you tonight. And I believe both Mr. Hurlovic and I have received an email And I believe both Mr. Hurlavich and I have received an email from SciTech's solicitor today indicating that they're content with the bylaw that is before you. And so, we are content with it as well. We're grateful for the staff report, and I want to say that Mr. Hurlavich and Mr. Meck have worked closely with us in getting this solution with SciTech, and I want to thank them in, in front of council today. So, those are our submissions, Mr. Chairman. Subject to any questions you may have of Mr...
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. The recommendations as are presented. Are there any questions? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Report to council from Janet Lepier.
Leper.
Lepier. Received and filed by Counselor Peter Angelo. Counselor Crater?
I apologize. I did have one question on the last application. Is it appropriate to ask it?
I don't, it's closed.
All right. That's fine. Well, I'm gonna ask it.
Sure.
Then you can tell me it's closed, and I'll sit down. Can we, can we now tell Mr. Bowman that he can go ahead with whatever development he wants to proceed with? He wants to put in the washrooms out there. He wants to do it immediately. That's, I think we all know that. So, can we, in our indirect way, say, go ahead and put them up?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that question.
You don't have to.
What's that?
There's a 20-day appeal period.
20-day appeal period.
So, you're saying yes, they can do it. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. What's council's feeling on 8.1?
Received and filed by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. Any questions?
Conflict.
Conflict noted by Counselor Iannone. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? 8.2. What's council's wishes on 8.2? Received and filed by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. You gonna second it? And talk on it?
Yes. I just wanna say that it's kinda nice to see positive resolution of these situations by the integrity commissioner. I think that's a great way to handle with mediation and apologies if necessary and a positive report back to council. I, I like what I see, and hopefully, that's the format for the future.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Under reports. Municipal accounts. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. The accounts. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. 9.2. Niagara Regional Housing Property Tax Exemption. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Strange. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. 9.3. Matters arising from MHC River Road. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Campbell. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. 9.4 and 9.5. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. 9.4 and 9.5. Any questions? All in favor? Carried unanimously. 9.6. I can't keep up here. My fingers are too big for this. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. Any questions? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Resolutions. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any questions regarding 10.1? All in favor? Carried unanimously. 10.2. Tarifitas Resolution. 10.2. Moved by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Strange. Are there any questions regarding 10.2? All, all those in favor? Anybody opposed?
But 10.2, not 9.5. Is that something? They are related.
They're related? Related? Is that okay? All those in favor?
Yep.
Carried unanimously. Communication and comments of the clerk. 11.1. Niagara Region Petition Elected Officials to Higher Standard. The feeling of council?
It doesn't bother me the wording of the petition. I'm happy to move it. I don't know where to go. I guess if those problems make changes to our code of conduct.
Okay. Moved by Counselor, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Campbell. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Heartland Forest. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. Move the recommendation. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.3. For council consideration. Moved by Counselor Campbell.
Yes, absolutely.
Second by Counselor Strange.
Celebration of Nations.
Considerations, sponsorship opportunities for indigenous arts, culture, and tradition.
No, this isn't a cap.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. I would suggest we receive and file.
Received and filed by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Night of Art. Moved by Counselor Thompson.
Relief from the bylaw.
Second by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.5 is Niagara Region Motion Respecting Trade.
But this is an immediate one, worship. Just to support the trade?
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Strange. Any questions? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.6. Tapsbury.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.7. Stanford Center Volunteer Signage. Moved by Counselor Strange, second by...
You worship, probably happy to second it, but I mean, this is, I mean, this is now a city park.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, these are things that honestly, you know, should be worked through with staff. I mean, I don't understand why they need to come to council. It's a city park now, so do we not have a mechanism in place with staff where they can approach staff and, I guess, run these things through? It should be part of our normal parks budget as opposed to coming and receiving special approval. That's my only, my only comment.
Who wants to answer Counselor Peter Angelo's question?
It's a city park now.
Mr. Todd?
Well, if I may, Mr. Acting Mayor, it, we own the property, but we have a lease agreement with them. I guess it's just their feeling that they come here and get the approval. We can certainly have a conversation with them and see if there's a better way to do it. Certainly don't wanna hold things up, but on the other hand, I think, I think they're used to that process because they've always done it that way, and they do have a lease for it, so. But it's certainly something we can take back and have a conversation with them.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Carried. 11.8. Lundys Lane Approval. Addition of two people. Moved Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. Are there any questions? All, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Carried unanimously. Liquor License Request. It's a feeling of council on 11.9.
Worship, probably happy to move the request.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.10. Eaters Heroes. Moved by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Conflict.
Moved by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. 11.11. Hydro Canal. Nikola Tesla Power Canal.
Who would decide the name of the motion?
What's that?
Who would decide the name?
Who was the... Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, the request came through. I think the council is just asking who would decide on that name. I was careful in my wording there just to make sure that council is aware that this is owned and operated by the Ontario Power Generation Incorporated. Their request also went to OPG, but it was also addressed to council, and that's why it's on the agenda. My recommendation is just that it's for the information of council, but it's obviously the will of council.
Received and filed by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Letter from Mr., correspondence from Mr. Bakker. What is he asking us for? Counselor, Counselor Iannone?
I guess I just wanna say for that group who's watching, do we have that communication he's now saying we didn't have, other than what he's provided with us? Did staff provide us with that?
Mr. Clerk?
The email that was received this morning from Mr. Bakker did also go to all of council. I was asked to put it on the agenda. I thought it was appropriate to put it as a communication item and not attach to the bylaw. However, I did reply back to him to say that the four attachments that he refers to in his email were not included in the email that he sent to me today. I see during the meeting, he's replied back to me to just say that the planning department should have received those. I'm not sure if staff, if we do have those on file or not. Might be appropriate for Director of Planning to comment.
Mr. Hurlavich?
Mr. Acting Mayor, some of the communication which Mr. or Dr. Bakker refers to that I've seen in the past, and I don't know whether those are the same four attachments that he alludes to in this email, were draft letters from the ministry. However, they were not in their final letter that we did put on the council agenda. On June the 22nd, we had the Ministry of Natural Resources representatives in Committee Room Two in City Hall. We sat down with them and went line by line through the official plan amendment that's on the council agenda tonight, 128. So, the ministry was there, and they basically gave their blessing to every policy that's before council tonight. So, it's my opinion that the ministry signed off through their participation and their acceptance of the official plan amendment as revised and on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you. Worship, through you to the planner. Do we have that documentation?
The four attachments?
No, the, the...
The Amendment 128?
The, the ministry agreeing with all the recommendations.
They sat at the table. That's all I can tell you. I was at the meeting.
I wasn't there. I'm asking, do we have that on paper? Like, I, I...
No, I didn't get them to sign the paper before they left the room. No, I did not.
Your worship, I have serious concerns about what is being conveyed to us with respect to Dr. Bakker's letters. And I'm of the mind that perhaps we might have thought differently had we had those letters as part of our deliberation with respect to moving forward. And I, I, I think that we, at this point, should ask for an outside investigation into what's being suggested with respect to the correspondence. I think that this might change the entire project itself. And I would make that a motion.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Just for clarification, can we try to understand, so that we're all of the same understanding, what is being suggested? What is being suggested?
Your worship, well, I think what's being suggested is, is some serious considerations from these letters that we didn't have as part of our deliberation process. And if you want to think of, of moving forward, all that information should have been with us. And I, I have some serious concerns about the fact that there might have been some, something that we need to know about.
So, just... Just to that point, then, your worship, should we not hear from our planner to see whether or not he agrees?
Sure. You know, I, I don't think that the, the concerns that are being expressed in these matters can be dealt with tonight by the planner. I think it's above and beyond that. We need to have outside investigation. I firmly believe someone, somewhere, somehow has crossed the line.
We have Counselor Iannone, and first of all, Counselor, he wants to address that. Alex, Mr. Hurlavich?
Well, I take exception to the slanderous statements, actually, I guess, libelous statements by Mr. or Dr. Bakker suggesting that staff was doing something underhanded, that we're being secretive, that we're withholding information. Those are all unfounded statements and not valid. This project has been subject to multiple public meetings, both in these chambers, outside of these chambers. The ministry's official letter was shared with this council at the public meeting. We've met with the ministry staff. You know, the fact that I'm reporting that to you tonight, the fact that certain counselors do not trust me, to be honest with them, is their opinion, but I find that slanderous and, and defaming.
Your worship? Counselor?
Let me just ask a question. Like, are we supposed to vote for this based on the fact that John Bakker says that we didn't receive information? Or is there information that he has that he can give to us that he knows that we didn't receive? Because the two are very different. I mean, in one, it's just simply an allegation that we didn't receive all the information. And on the other side of it is, well, here's the information that you didn't receive. To me, it would be a world of difference in, in how I vote on this. I mean, if it's simply an allegation saying you didn't receive all the information, then my gut is I'm gonna have to trust that staff are honest, and they gave me everything that was in their power to give me. If the other one comes true and I'm giving something that says you did not receive this, then I might have a different opinion. But until that time, I think I'd be inclined to support our staff, your worship.
Counselor Iannone?
I'll speak on the bylaw.
Oh, well, we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Campbell. Counselor, would you...
Well, I, I'm...
It's a pretty serious allegation.
Yeah. It's not a serious, I'm not, I'm not making any allegation whatsoever. I'm simply saying that the information that Dr. Bakker has provided us today, all of us have received that information. It leads me to believe that the outcome of that recommendation we made to move forward with Thundering Waters might have been different if we had have said, okay, let's wait and see what the outcome is, going back to the ministry to see what their concerns really were, investigate it further. That's, that's all I'm saying. And it would appear that we didn't receive that information. And the motion I make is, is on the basis that we, we, we hire an outside source to look at the implications and, and see how this moves through or not.
Mr. Todd wants to answer.
Mr. Acting Mayor, if I could try to take a bit of a crack at this. So, at the, the meeting where council approved the recommendation, there was 27, Alex, 27 it was?
Conditions.
Conditions to be met. So, you had all of the information you needed to make that night that was available to us. Since that time... Since that time, staff and the planning consultants and the ministry have gone to craft up the wording to satisfy those 27 conditions. So the meeting Alex is referring to, there was ministry staff, regional staff, our staff around the conference table, working out the details of wording to be included in the bylaw to satisfy those 27 conditions. That's what's before you tonight in that wording. So the ministry staff has sat at a meeting and, lack of better words, mediated that wording with our staff and with regional staff. So I don't think there's anything untoward here. We had to work through getting that, you know, through those 27 conditions and getting that information back to you. Mr. Bakker is sitting outside of that process, so I don't know what information he's saying he has or doesn't have, but this is a process that you have to go through to get to the point where there may be a meeting with staff and consultants that are agreeing around that table, that that's the language we'll bring forward. So I'm not sure where he's coming from on it. I think our staff has done the best job they can do to capture all of the findings and wording of all of those ministries and staff that sat around those meetings, and that's what's before you tonight. So I'm not sure how, you know, his sort of allegations play into this in terms of... because he wasn't part of that process.
Counsel Peter? I'm just saying, Your Worship, and I appreciate that, that we might have made a decision in a different manner had that information been made available to us through the Ministry of Natural Resources.
But I think... Help me out here again. I think it... the information when you made a decision, this is wording that was dealt with after you made your decision to satisfy those conditions. So this is the first time it's back to you. It's not like we get anything from you. It's just that the wording in satisfying those 27 conditions has gone... that process has gone on since you approved that recommendation.
Perhaps those 27 recommendations would have been somewhat different had we had those letters in our possession, and those letters were written to us prior to us making that decision. I'm sorry.
We have got them.
Well, I don't have them. I received the... I received the email from the city clerk.
None came through? None came through?
Maybe I should speak on the record, because I haven't received these. I asked the city clerk whether or not they came through. He confirms that... it says in the email that there's four attachments, but nobody has the attachments. So I'm not sure what it is that everyone else has seen. Maybe I'm the only one that hasn't seen it. Maybe I can get some confirmation from others around the table that they haven't seen this either. Like I said to you, it would be a different story for me in deciding on how I vote, but I haven't seen them yet.
Nope.
So...
I don't have either.
Mr. Acting Mayor, I haven't seen the attachments. I can speak to something near the bottom of his email where he says that there was a peer review done by a company called Northwest on the environmental impact study. And that was the first study that was done by the consultants while this was part of the city's official plan amendment, part of our secondary plan. Following that, the developer basically chose to go on her own and provide her own documentation. She redid the EIS. Based on some of the comments that were made by North-South, these are similar to, we get comments, for instance, the car wash you dealt with tonight, there were comments about servicing. That we passed on to the developer. He then worked with Jeff Holman's office to determine that the best way to deal with water was to take it out to Victoria Avenue. I didn't share that letter with you tonight, but that was comments that came from one of our departments specific to an application that we passed on to the developer so he could work out the details. We do this all the time. So there was an EIS, there was a peer review. As a result of that peer review, the EIS was done, it was redone, it was modified again. I would say it was modified at least four times before it reached... went through the ministry. And at the end of going through the ministry, they sent their formal letter saying, we still object to this, 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 and this. We outlined those as possible modifications, part of the 27 which the CAO just spoke to, and then we wrote those into policy. We sat at the table on June 22nd to work those out with the ministry. So it's an iterative process. It didn't just mean... excuse me, mean that there was one comment, and then the next comment, and the next comment, and they all stack up. They were refinements of previous... the balance of the letters, I have no idea what he's talking about.
Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say this. Counsel Campbell is standing here talking about a concern he has, which we're supposed to do as Counselors. This is our forum to do it. I'm sorry that you take objection or offense or whatever it is that Mr. Bakker is insinuating, but...
You have a lot of statements.
That's what she said.
Interesting.
But it's our job to ask. So I'm confused...
Did you ask a question?
Well, he did. He asked about the letters that you did not receive, and I don't need any attitude here. I'm just commenting on Counsel Campbell's. But I want to say at the bottom of the email that Mr. Bakker sent us is an attachment that I didn't see until tonight, and it's his WordPress blog. And it talks about the letters that Counsel Campbell... it talks about the letters we didn't receive that are dated December 11th, 2017, and January 25th, 2018, and that they were both signed by Atera McKenna, Senior Planner for the MNRF. And in it, it says that the April 30th document that we did get, in which we voted on, this Ms. McKenna alludes to the documentation we didn't get. We didn't like the application. We didn't vote for it. We wanted all the answers there. I think that was raised that evening, too. So I guess the question is, can we have the letters dated those days, December 11th, January 25th, the letters that on April 30th she refers to, as he's referring to, it's suppressed documents, not me? Can we have those to look at?
If I can...
The letters were to the city...
Mr. Acting Mayor, I believe the Counselor is asking for four letters. I will look to see if we have four letters. At this point, I'm still not sure what they are. The fact that the Counselor was able to activate her link on her iPad is one thing. I've tried to activate mine while I'm sitting here. Certainly, I'm not getting any response. So I have no idea what the four letters are. I believe the best thing would be for Mr. Bakker to supply those to the Planning Department, which are the city clerk, rather, and the city clerk can distribute them to city council.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's on the bottom of your links. I didn't see it either. It's teeny tiny.
I can't open them. I don't know if anybody...
Yeah, I couldn't open them before here, and now it says WordPress, and all you do is press that, and it opened it to this whole document. So like, I'm going to support your asking for the information, because I, too, think that we had everything in front of us, maybe. The support may have been different. I don't know. But it's just simply asking for everything that we believe should have been provided. It's... to me, it's just common sense.
Mr. Clerk?
So I think part of the problem here is Mr. Bakker sending this the day of a Council meeting. It was sent this morning. The letter... the email that was sent this morning is part of your agenda. Immediately, it was asked by staff if I could reforward those attachments. My response was, I wasn't able to open them. I replied back to Mr. Bakker for the attachments, and now he has replied during the meeting to just say that Planning Department should have them, but if not, he can go ahead and send them. I also just want to point out that he did... he was a public speaker at the public meeting, and that public meeting was deemed to have closed. So Counsel may want to consider that as well.
The feeling of Counsel. The motion... well, Counsel Campbell?
Your Worship, I'll change that motion. I would like to see those letters, have them directly sent to Counsel, and we will use them for further information.
Counsel?
But I thought he already saw them.
I... you haven't seen them.
I haven't seen them, no.
I haven't either.
I haven't either. I'm just reading his blog. Whatever's attached to the body...
Oh, I thought you said it's all there on the blog.
Yeah, he's highlighting the dates of the letters that he says we didn't get.
Oh, so the letters aren't there?
No, and I just said that. It's December 11th, it's June 25th. I'm sorry, January 25th, 2018. He's giving us the dates of the letters we did not receive.
So my motion is that we receive those letters for future consideration.
I will second that.
For future consideration? Now, we have a motion on the floor by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Iannone, that we receive those letters. Recorded vote?
Whose letters are they?
From who?
The MNRF, to the city.
From the ministry.
To the city.
From the ministry to the city?
Yes.
If they're to the city, I'm fine with them.
To the city.
To the city, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
That's his concern. They were to the city, and they weren't shared with us in the documentation.
I believe I heard that it was asked for a recorded vote. There is a motion by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Iannone, that staff... or sorry, that Counsel received the MNRF four attachment letters referred to in Mr. Bakker's email dated July 10th, 2018, for future consideration. Counsel Campbell?
In favor.
Counsel Crater?
Yes.
Counsel Iannone?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Curio? Counsel Peter Angelo?
In favor.
Counsel Strange?
Yes.
And Counsel Thompson?
Yes, I just don't like the atmosphere of accusations that's going around.
It passes.
Okay, now what do we do?
Move on?
Move on. Ratification in camera.
Nothing to ratify in open counsel for that.
Nothing to ratify open counsel. The bylaws?
Do you need a motion to introduce the bylaws, Your Worship?
Motion to introduce the bylaws.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Thompson?
Seconded by Counsel Strange?
Can you pull bylaw 2018-76, please?
Which one? I'm sorry, Counsel. 2000?
2018-76. This is right in front.
Why?
She just... she'd like to pull it.
Pull it?
Oh, what do you do to speak to it?
You want to ask the question? Go ahead, ask the question, Counsel.
It's kind of like the consent agenda. Is there... and I'm trying to go through this, because we received an email... I received an email from somebody that said in... and I'm trying to read it as we're doing this. In the bylaw we're passing tonight, are we agreeing to front-end anything? Somebody from staff can answer that. I'd appreciate it.
Who's going to answer this question?
Who wrote the report?
Well, are we agreeing to front-end?
Are we agreeing to front... are we agreeing to front-end any part of this development?
Mr. Hurlivich? It's part of you.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I can't say that we're agreeing to front any aspect of it. There may be policies in there that would provide for, at the time of subdivision development, that front-ending agreements could be entered into, but we're a long way away from subdivision agreements at this point. There would be a policy direction if it's in there. I'd have to go through policy by policy.
Okay, Counsel?
Okay, and at this point, can any clear cutting or any trees be cut or anything done at this point now on that piece of property?
Mr. Hurlivich?
No, in fact, the wooded area that was of concern, there is a holding provision on that wooded area that they would need to do further studies before they could go in and do their... any cutting. So they still... they need to do the further studies and then get their permit from either the Conservation Authority or MNRF.
And have any of the... they had 27 conditions. Have any of the conditions been completed so far?
Mr. Hurlivich?
There weren't conditions as in a subdivision plan. They were modifications to the official plan policies, so they were rewording of policies to accommodate the requests of Ministry of Natural Resources, the region, and the Conservation Authority. So there were wording changes, word smithing.
Okay.
Counsel?
Okay, so let's re-watch that video, and it was, I will... some set around this table said, I will support this development because they have 27 conditions that they have to get through before anything can happen. And now they're not conditions, it's semantics and wording in an app... in a phrase or a paragraph of a contract. That is absolutely not the impression given at the Council meeting that evening. So what have they complied to?
Mr. Todd, did you... want to say something?
I just wanted to, Counsel, just to highlight, further to Mr. Hurlivich, it's 6.2 in the bylaw, talks about front-ending agreements. It sets out a policy that says Counsel may consider a front-ending policy, as Mr. Hurlivich said, in the future. So it's not saying we're doing it, it's just putting a policy here to say if Counsel wants to do that in the future, the policy would be there to allow you to enter into such agreements.
Can you just explain front-ending?
It might be front-ending of servicing. It might be front-ending of future roadworks.
Does that mean we pay for it without collecting the money from them, so we are subsidizing it until... I just want to use the right wording. We are financially front-ending them money, services in kind until they can... I don't understand.
Or it could be a developer front-ending certain services that we would recoup on the back end. So in other words, they might front-end an oversized sewer that would be collected later through development charges or through developments, perhaps, that were beyond their boundaries that they could recover money from the next guy down those... they can take different forms. Alex, I'm not sure, Jeff, which ones have been done in the past, but they can come in different forms.
Thank you, and maybe through you to Jeff, Mr. Holman. Can you give me an example of when we've done that?
Grand Niagara?
Grand Niagara?
Would that be right, Jeff?
I'm not...
We did the services.
I don't remember that.
Well, we built a couple pumping stations in anticipation of growth and this up there where we've front-ended and funded it fully from development charges.
That was 10.8 million, if I remember correctly, because it was quite the discussion here.
Yes.
And then we didn't end up getting that money. It ended up coming from us.
No, we're getting it back. No, it's all being paid for by the development community.
Okay.
Because that's who was built.
That's the wrong... I'm not thinking of the...
Yes.
Okay. And the conditions? The conditions, the wording, the semantics, what has been completed in the 27 ones they were supposed to?
Mr. Hurlivich? The 27...
They were recommendations...
Their conditions?
They were recommendations for modifications to the official plan amendment. So those 27 wording changes were put in there. I'm sorry, Counsel, I don't have a copy of the report in front of me. I left it on my desk, not realizing the line of questioning that would occur tonight.
I want to make it clear, when we spoke on that that night, they were not ever called modification or word changes. They were conditions...
I think Alex can go get it.
That's great. But they were not put to the public as modification or word changes. They were conditions the developer had to complete before they could... because everybody said, oh, we didn't pass anything. They have to wait till they complete their conditions, which makes it more onerous on the developer so that things are tighter, and now they become word changes? I find that problematic.
Well, Mr. Hurlivich can go get it, and then we'll deal with it.
Your Worship, if I could, while I...
Mr. Campbell?
You know, some time ago, I was quite impressed, and this is when I first got on Counsel. I was at a con... got on council, I was at a conference, and we all know Hazel McCallion, and she was a fireball. But I remember she stood up once and said, "Don't tie recommendations up with words that you can't undo with your lips." And I'm really afraid that the passage of this bylaw tonight is committing us to something in the future that we might find, we didn't realize that that is what we are doing. I'm afraid that somehow, in this whole bylaw, it's going to come back and bite us. That's my concern. I want to see the bylaw come back that we passed last meeting, where they passed all 27. That's what I want to see. I don't want to see this piecemeal. I want to see the whole thing, the whole package. But if we pass this, then we got a piece of this that snuck its way through perhaps. And then the next time they come before council, it's another piece of information they're sneaking through. I want to see the whole thing in its entirety. I don't want to see bits and pieces like this tonight.
And just, can I just piggyback something on that? I, I watched a regional council meeting last week, where the discussion of the Riverfront and what regional council's role in this was going to be. And I remember asking that night, "When we pass this community plan, does this mean we are bypassing the secondary plan and it doesn't have to go to the region?" And the answer was yes. Now, the region's discussing, what, what authority do we have and what, what part in this application do we play in regards to approving anything? And I'm pretty sure I've re-watched that tape a couple times, and it was the region had no bearing, and actually, Mr. Hurlovich said, "The region was not interested in getting involved at that time." So.
I don't know the specific quote, but okay.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Hurlovich?
I'll, I'll paraphrase you to give you that, but you can go back and watch it.
Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Acting Mayor, so the reading from the staff report, which was at council on May the 8th, it says, "Staff is recommending approval of the proposed official plan amendment for the Riverfront Community Plan, subject to the recommendations contained in this report." There were recommendations. There were 27 recommendations. So there was a area on endangered species, and there was review of what the Ministry of Natural Resources had to say. At the end of that, the recommendation was that Schedule G and Schedule A1 be amended to illustrate the features of certain land uses. Schedule G be amended to illustrate certain habitat location. That the amendment be modified to require further studies to determine the extent of Blazing Star and Kentucky Tree. That the amendment be modified to provide policies. I don't know how more, much more specific we could be in that the report said there were recommendations, there were modifications and changes to the amendment that was presented in its draft form on May the 8th. We can't just write these in isolation. So we wrote drafts, we sent those to the Ministry of Natural Resources, we sent them to the Conservation Authority, we sent them to the region. We had then invited all of them to submit their comments, which they did. We then met collectively on June the 22nd to prepare a document that you have before you tonight, which we're currently discussing, in which we took all of those recommendations and wordsmithed the document so that we could provide the best amendment for you tonight. If council adopts it tonight, then the, anybody who is opposed to that will receive notice and can appeal it. Anybody who, if council chooses not to adopt it tonight, then I suppose the developer can appeal. That's what council has in front of it tonight. Has a document that staff put its best efforts in, working with the agencies that commented on this. The report definitely says recommendations, and it speaks to modifications. That's all I can say.
Okay, can I, can we suggest we pull that bylaw and vote on it separately?
Sure. Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one last thing to what Alex has said, just, just to make it clear. So that, those, that process that happened since the last council meeting, and having all of those people in the room, the document before you, all of those agencies, regardless of what these letters dated, whatever Mr. Bakker's talking about, those agencies were in the room signing off on this document that you have tonight. So I don't know what those letters may or may not have said, but representatives from MNR, region, Conservation Authority, their planning consultants, our staff, were in that room, as Alex said, wordsmithing this document to get it in front of you tonight. So there should be no secrets with MNR or whoever else. I don't know what those older letters that were dated a couple months say, but they came to the table working out the wording in this document. So that's what's in front of you tonight. So I agree with Alex, the document's here, staff have done a, a job, a good job to get it here. It's in front of council, and we're recommending that, you know, in accordance with the, the previous decision that you go ahead and approve this tonight.
Can I just, just for clarification?
Can we pull that bylaw and vote on it separately? Because we're, we can argue all night.
Okay, guys, I'm not going to argue, I just want to ask a question. Does that mean that, that everybody around that table feels the 27 recommendations, conditions, modifications of word changes are complete and they can go ahead?
That's my understanding coming out of that meeting.
So approving this, they can move forward starting tomorrow?
Well, there are still other processes that have to come back to you. You have a subdivision process, you have a whole bunch of subdivision servicing plans, and these are other approvals that'll be back. This is just really the first phase, because you've got zoning amendments, you've got subdivision plans. These are just the OP documents.
Okay, so the 27 recommendations are complete. When we approve tonight, what can they start to do tomorrow?
They can start meeting with our staff to get the subdivision plan done, the zoning bylaw amendments done, what other other documentations need to come back to this council. I think our staff are meeting later this month on pre-consultation with respect to the subdivision, subdivision layout. So that, those are the next immediate phases that they have to get on.
Okay, thank you. Are you separating this?
Would you like that one pulled and dealt with separately?
Yeah, let's vote on that separately. Can we not do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
We'll hold on all the others first and, and vote on that one. So, pull that one.
Yeah, if you want to just make a motion to give bylaws.
You can just say opposed to whichever one you're voting.
Right, you could, yes, you could just say you're opposed to that bylaw.
But can I, I'd like it pulled and voted on separately. Can I do that?
I don't see why you can't.
Okay, thank you.
We did it tonight for, for the acting mayor.
Well, we need a second or two motion.
I move it.
Seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we pull that one, vote on it separately, so then, can we deal with the rest of them first? We've already got a motion on the floor for all the bylaws, do we not?
Except for that.
Except for that one.
Second and third.
Pardon me? Okay, then we have to have a vote to separate it? Is that what you're suggesting?
It's not a consent agenda. We don't just pull a bylaw.
Well, your court is saying we can.
By law, a motion, you can.
He just, she made a vote, we, we have to vote on the motion. Are there any questions regarding the motion to pull that bylaw? All those in favor of pulling that bylaw? Opposed?
Okay, so we're going to pass the bylaws as a whole?
Right.
I'd like it recorded, please.
Okay.
Your Worship, I'd like to speak one.
Sure.
The information that Mr. Todd just revealed, somehow I can't believe that those 27 recommendations have been all met. I mean, Counselor Morocco isn't here, but she voted on it because she felt that it would take a long time for those recommendations to be moved through. And I get the impression, and I don't think anybody around council knew till that comment was made by Mr. Todd, that basically Counselor Inoni said, "Are we front-ending anything with the passing of this bylaw?" And we are front-ending. We're giving them the 100% goal. That's what he said. I mean, they got to come back to us for subdivisions and all that, but.
This is, this would be like we're at first base. They've got a number of other processes to go for. What you're doing tonight is you're approving the official plan amendment that, that allows you to move to the next phase. It doesn't give you carte blanche to go out and do it. There's going to be multiple meetings and documents that are going to be coming back to this council. The 27 items that Mr. Hurlovich talked about were items that needed to be clarified and, and the wording detailed to get this document to you tonight. That's, that's what the work that's been undertaken over the last month and a half.
I guess it further emphasizes the need for all of us to have seen those documents prior to us making a final decision on the motion that's before us tonight. That's my biggest concern, because we may have moved as a council differently. And, and I'm saying we don't, we don't have all the information to pass this bylaw tonight to move it forward, because that basically says it's moving forward.
But, but if I may, Counselor, there may have been a letter from MNR.
There was four.
That, that today may have no meaning because their staff have come to the table.
And there may not be. That they may, may have meaning.
But I'm saying the experts that are signing off on having this document here are the ones that are saying we're satisfied with.
I don't even know if the people from the Ministry of Natural Resources were even aware of those letters themselves. The ministry is a huge organization.
But the staff were in the meeting.
But the staff don't, don't have those letters.
I don't know which letters they are. We can call it.
Well, we have a motion on the floor for the bylaws. If someone wants to vote against a particular bylaw, they vote against a particular bylaw. I'm going to back for it. Mr. Clerk?
You just asked for a motion to introduce the bylaws, those being 2018-71 to 2018-88.
Right.
That's.
Can I ask for a recorded vote?
Absolutely. Okay, so a motion to introduce the bylaws.
Get a first, a second, or?
Yeah, I'll introduce it.
Yeah, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. She asked for a recorded vote.
Okay, the motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange, is to introduce the bylaws 2018-71 to 2018-88. Motion's been, been made? All right, Counselor Campbell?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, we're passing them, right?
We're introducing them. That's the motion. That's the motion that's always been done at this council.
They didn't pass.
They haven't been passed. They haven't even been introduced yet. And then they'll be read a first time, and then a second and third time it passed.
Yeah.
I can just interrupt for one second. So the difficulty we have here is that we're having a recorded motion, a recorded vote on a motion to approve all of the bylaws before you.
Well, because the other one failed.
Well, they wouldn't let me pull it.
So if we are now voting, I just pointed out, Counselor, you, you've indicated, I'm voting no. It means you're voting no to every bylaw.
All the bylaws.
Well, that's the only option that takes.
You can, you can, you can be recorded as opposed to a certain bylaw. You could be opposed to bylaw, whatever number.
That's what Victor said.
You, you don't have to oppose all of them.
Yeah, I have a point to stand up and say, "I'm opposed to this bylaw."
All right.
Okay, so can we back up?
I want to stop the rest.
We back up and, and just do the bylaws, and if you're opposed to a bylaw, vote against the bylaw.
So all that being said, once the motion is introduced, the acting mayor will then ask if there are any questions or comments of council.
Can you ask for a recorded vote on 2018-76?
Yeah, we, well, we'll have a recorded vote on all of the bylaws tonight.
No, that's what Mr. Todd just didn't want.
And I, I would suggest that you indicate your opposition to that specific bylaw.
2018-76.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange to introduce the bylaws 2018-71 to 2018-88. Counselor Campbell?
I'm opposed to 2018-76.
I'm going to back up just a little bit as to what the CEO stated. Right now, we're just introducing the bylaws. We're not voting on them. There's just a motion to introduce them. Once that's completed, the mayor will then say if there are any questions or comments, and if, if council's all in favor. That would be the appropriate time to make any opposition.
It would have been a lot easier if we just.
I did give advice to the chair that that could be done. Okay, so motion to introduce the bylaws, 2018-71 to 2018-88. Counselor Campbell?
Why wouldn't we have a recorded vote on this if we're just introducing the bylaws?
Because a motion was passed to have a record.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, and Mr. Todd stood up and said, "Then vote recorded on the 2018." So everyone's introducing it, now I'll remove that, and let's just vote on the introduction.
All in favor?
And we have a motion. We have a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. And we introduce the bylaws. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Okay, so bylaws 2018-71 to 2018-88 have been read a first time.
Second and third by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. Any questions? All those in favor?
No, wait a second, that's what I'm going to oppose.
I just want to be shown opposed.
Opposed to 2018-76.
Correct.
And yourself as well.
Yes.
And Crater as well.
Anybody else?
Nope. I'm not going to stop anything for Dr. Bakker, anyway.
So I, sorry, I have oppositions then from Counselors Inoni, Crater, and Campbell on that, just for bylaws, 2018-76.
Right.
Okay, so the motion was made, so 2018-71 to 2018-88 read a second and third time.
All those in favor? Carried? The rest? Carried?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And passed.
The passed. Are we done with it?
We're done.
But just a point of order. It wasn't a recorded vote. It did pass. It passed with a vote of three to three. And according to the rules of order, if that motion fails.
No, there were only three in opposition.
Well, there's only three voting for it.
The, the mayor counts as a vote.
Uh, he can vote.
Recorded vote.
He can, he can.
On a tie.
He can, he can, he can vote at any time, and he can vote to break a tie.
Okay.
There was no opposition, therefore he's in favor.
Yes. New business. Anybody have any, anybody have any new business? Counselor Thompson?
Anyway, there's so much time in between meetings, this stuff builds up. I'm going to have to take.
30 pieces? You got 30?
Counselor Peter Angelo's turn this time. Anyway, first of all, I think you've all been made aware of the billboard that went up on Lundie's Lane. Maybe you can put it up on the screen.
There it is.
There it is there. This is the regional health department putting up a sign. InfoDyne is mandated by the provincial government to have online information about problem properties, swimming pools that are checked by the health department, whatever. The acting medical officer of health tried to defend this by saying, "Oh, this is mandated." And I responded and said, "Online is mandated." Billboards with people fearful faces and indicating about restaurants in Niagara Falls is not mandated. Anyway, after many emails back and forth, and complaints from the people in the industry, where they're, everybody's spending millions of dollars to support the destination, and we have our regional health department putting up signs like this that are trying to have a negative impact on eating in restaurants in Niagara Falls. I thought that this was. in Niagara Falls. I thought that this was so out of line and disgusting, and the health department tried to defend that initially, and then when the regional chair, everybody else got involved, they backed off, and the sign is coming down. But I really think we have to have a report back how this happened. What was their objective? Could anybody not realize a sign like that from the health department regarding restaurants is not going to have a positive effect on what's happening in Niagara Falls or any place else. Apparently, there are three of these signs up throughout the region. Who's paying for them? You know, they're always complaining about the budget and the health department budget, and I think we have to have a report back on this. I was with the health department for most of my life, working there. Things have changed so much. They've cut back on so much of their work that used to be done regarding rats, cockroaches, bedbugs. All they do now, they send you out a brochure. And I told this to the regional chair yesterday. I said, this is unacceptable. No wonder we have a rat problem like we have. Anyway, the sign's coming down. I would like a report back how it happened and some of the comments regarding the services that are being supplied by the health department now, which are totally inadequate.
Motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Strange. That staff gets a report back to us. All those in favor? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. Heard Mr. Todd.
He had to have a break, I think.
Said only one new business.
Okay. Did he? There he is.
Okay.
Can't go to the washroom until we're done.
We're having a lot of debate with respect to parking lots. Maybe you're the guy to talk to anyway. We seem to have a double standard now. They were trying to tell all the parking lots to bring in Victoria Center up to standard, and some of the best parking lots that had been approved in the past were told they had to make major changes. And all of a sudden, we said, okay, we're not going to do it this year. We'll do it, make sure everybody's going to have to comply for next year. And in the meantime, there's some other parking lots that have come forward. They have applied for a permit. They've set a site plan. They're not completed, but they have the lot all cleaned up. The one I'm talking about specifically is on Stanley Avenue, and they've been told you can't use that as a parking lot. So, how do you say to one, we're going to give you it to next year, and another one that comes on, I think we've got a double standard. We have to deal with these and come up with solutions, so we can always use more parking lots. Do you have a-
Well, I can comment on that to you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The position we took was that there was a number of existing parking lots that we wanted to bring up to standard. And we said to them, we'll give you a grace period this year, but next year, in the 2019 licensing period, you've got to be compliant, which means proper drainage, lighting, paving. The existing ones still had to get a license for this year. Any brand-new parking lot that came on, I think that's what you're referring to. It's not a parking lot that existed ever before. We said the new standards should apply this year. So-
So, you do have a double standard?
No, because we don't have a double standard because we said anybody new had to comply. We gave the existing people because they had never been forced in the past to comply with the new standards and were already operating. It wasn't enough time for this season to get all of that work done. So, that's why we said if you're coming in with a brand-new application, we're going to be dealing with you under the brand-new standards. So-
So, you're letting the existing ones off the hook that don't comply, but the ones who are coming in and trying to get started, you're not saying, well, you can have a period until next year to meet the bylaw and the standards?
And I think the thinking was they're starting from scratch, so they're a brand-new, it's a brand-new lot. So, the feeling was they should comply-
Have you looked at it?
I'm not even sure where it is.
Looks on Stanley Avenue right behind it.
But that's the position. That's the position we were taking. So-
Anyway, rather than get into all that, I would make a motion that you look at one in particular on Stanley where I've been harassed about it to see if there is something that they can do to have some support. What they have to do, they've applied for a permit, they've put a site plan in what they want to do, and they're working to upgrade it and make it happen. So, maybe they just need a little guidance on how to accomplish that.
If I may, a second. I think if, I'll just say, if we're going to have a motion, I think we'd rather from staff give direction to say that regardless of whether it's an existing bylaw or existing lot or a new lot, that all of the new regulations come into 19. That would be the motion.
Yeah, can't pick and choose.
Pardon me?
I think it would be better than picking and choosing. That's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, and that's the direction we'd be looking for. I would just forewarn you that you do realize that we had a fair amount of pressure from the BIAs to make sure we clean these things up. So-
Well, and I was sitting there at the same time, along with whenever the acting mayor wasn't in Vegas, he was out there, too.
All the parking lots in Vegas are paved.
But if that is the motion, you still have to remember that they do still have to get a license for this year. So, there'll be certain things that they still need to comply with, but they will need to get a license. It may not mean that they have to be paved and all that, if that's what you're getting at, but if that's what the motion of council is, then-
Well, there's a lot of them that aren't paved. The old Casadora one, they don't comply.
But that's where we had said any existing lot has to fully comply by May of next year.
Yeah. Okay. So, why wouldn't you-
I think Mr. Dren wants to comment.
Okay.
If I can just comment. So, when we look at some of the new ones that are coming in, they're, for lack of a better word, they're handing us a plan on a Kleenex. In other words, there has to be a proper plan, a proper drawing, because all the, the majority of the existing ones have done that. They've went out, hired architects, they've hired the people to do it, and a lot of these are coming in on hand-drawn, and we don't accept that because it's, we don't have property lines, we don't have anything that we can say, is that land on their property? So, I think there has to be some sort of standard set to say if they submit the proper plans and it's reasonable, yes, we could approve them. But if they're just coming in and say, hey, I have a piece of land I want to, you know, put parking here, that's a different story, right?
You know the one on Stanley Avenue?
I'm not familiar. I'm not familiar. So, no, no, I'm saying in general-
How do you know it's on Kleenex?
I'm not saying that.
What the hell are you talking about?
No, I'm sorry. I'm not saying that. I'm saying a lot of the lots that are coming in-
All I'm asking you, treat everybody the same way, and if they come in and they do things properly, submit the proper plans, what's the problem? You've already given the other people the same benefit.
We just, staff would, if that's the case, staff needs a motion here because we had a previous report about three months ago before this council. It said otherwise. It said enforce the rules.
No.
Yes, it did.
What it said is given till 2019.
Existing lots. So, I think we need a motion to clarify that if council is saying it's any lot gets the grace until 19. We're fine with that, but that's different than what we had reported before.
What's your comments?
I didn't bring this up. You need a motion if you want to include them, but I understand what Mr. Dren is suggesting, that they have to be, they have to have the proper plan.
They have to be working to comply and do the proper drawings. I was told they did do that, and they're applying for a permit. If they haven't, then they have to do that.
They have to comply.
But I went out and looked at the lot, and it looks as good as the one in Casadora. It's all, it's not asphalt.
How would you suggest we do this, then?
Well, I think what the council is saying is that they, first of all, they have to give proper plans, and they have to get a license. So, they have to go through that process. If you're saying that for a lot like that, that will not comply with paving and proper drainage and all that, that you're saying as long as they've got the proper plans and get a license, that they will be-
And we know the timeline.
They will be like other existing lots where they must comply by the next licensing period, which would be May of 2019, then we would treat them all the same. If that's what, that would be what your motion is.
But I understand what Mr. Dren is suggesting. He's suggesting that we would have to have an application on file that meets all the criteria, that there's going to be this much green, there's going to be this much asphalt, there's going to be this signage, there's going to be, everything has to comply. And I think he's suggesting that some of them have not submitted the proper application with a proper design.
Well, that's, I'm-
And I'm not suggesting, and I don't think you're suggesting that we bend that rule, that if everything else isn't compliance-
They have to comply with the site plan.
Right. Similar to the ones that we have grandfathered for another year.
Yeah. They're comparable to the one at Casadora.
If you have a motion, then you need, we need a second.
Yeah. I'd make the motion that we try to comply, get these people to comply, and give them the opportunity to operate. That's all.
Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Strange. Are there any comments or questions pertaining to this motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried?
I hate to say this, but Airbnbs, I don't know how many phone calls everybody gets every day and how many emails we have to look at, but there seems to be emails going out from City Hall indicating that, oh, we're looking at this again, we're going to have a debate and a discussion on this again, and there's an opportunity for change. I thought we went all through that. And now we're suggesting, you know, I want to make one change if it does come back. I want to make sure we don't have managers in vacation rentals or even bed and breakfast. As soon as you have a manager, you're going to get, they're all going to be Airbnbs because you'll drop in and drop out, and it isn't going to work. We've never had any trouble with bed and breakfast, but there seems to be some kind of encouragement that this is going to change, that the emails going out are suggesting that maybe the council is going to be more lenient with this. And you've heard the association people that were here saying, we don't care what you do. We're going to carry on in residential areas. And it's just a mess out there.
Mr. Todd-
And I don't know how your bylaw enforcement people deal with this. It's just a constant, everyday, serious problem that is going to take us years to bring under control.
If I may, to you, Mr. Secretary. I honestly don't know where that message is coming from. At the last meeting-
I'm going to get to that.
Well, at the last meeting, the same issue was raised. We specifically spoke to Mr. Spencer. He assured us that that is not the messaging they're giving out of their office. They are taking addresses and basically saying, we'll get to them when we can get to them, but there's so many of them we're getting done. But the only thing that has come back to this council is we said we'd report back on the fee, and I guess the issue over manager versus owner occupied that was, I think, in the motion of council. Those are the only two issues we need to come back with, but-
Mr. Hurlovich?
I think what councillor Thompson's referring to is that, I think it was in May, I met with two representatives from Airbnb. Excuse me. They had gotten in touch with the mayor's office, and I met with them as a result of that. They suggested that the city's approach was too narrow and that we should be looking at some other opportunities. I said to them, if you have some other opportunities, bring those, send those in to me, and I will share them with council. I believe that's what councillor Thompson is referring to. I then got a-
How many emails have you had back and forth with the same people about the same topic?
I got a very brisk comment back from councillor Thompson, saying, no way, council dealt with it. We've made our decision. I wrote to them and said, I'm dealing with writing the bylaws that council directed that we write. Bed and breakfast in all the residential zones and vacation rentals in GCTC and CB zones. That's where it stops, as far as I know. Anyway-
If I may, too, the two new bylaw officers started this week, so now we're up to full complement. One of their priorities is going to be getting out. They're working different shifts, so there's time that they can visit in the evening hours. So, we're up to full staff.
I just, I appreciate that, and all I'm trying to do is not give these people the idea because I see it every day. Oh, the council is going to deal with this again. It's, looks like, and people are sending emails to us saying, you people already made a decision. Are you going to change your mind now? Anyway, that's my concern. Anyway, I expressed my opinion on that, and I certainly wouldn't give any-
No motion.
What kind of motion do you want? You know, we've already made the decision.
I thought you said something about the managers.
Oh, do we want to do that now, or when Alec comes back with all of his recommendations for change?
I mean, he's drafting a bylaw now, so.
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion that we, it's not a manager that's going to be in charge of bed and breakfast. It's got to be the owner occupied.
I can't support that.
Councillor Campbell?
Actually, I can't support that only because I'd like to see what Mr. Hurlovich is bringing back and then consider the manager. You might be throwing a monkey wrench into the whole thing.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have a motion on the floor by councillor Thompson that we include that in the, Alex includes that in the-
The recommendation.
In the recommendations?
No manager in Airbnb.
Has to be an owner? Is that what you're suggesting? Has to be an owner, not a manager?
Yes.
Owner occupied.
Yeah.
Seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Campbell opposed.
Okay. We beat you on that one, too. Anyway.
If you're keeping scores, you're losing.
Some time ago, I brought up a vote of report passed by council regarding the trees over on somebody's adjacent property, a senior, somebody that didn't have the ability to, and I asked for a report to see what other municipalities, if there is any ideas that could help some of these people out. I've had a couple of calls this week saying, where's that report? What did you do about it? I heard you talking about it. I was interested. Is that coming back soon?
Well, if I may, if you miss me, the staff was doing some research on it. It was kind of falling under the solicitor's area, so I'm just not sure when we'll get that report back to you. Probably won't be before the end of the term.
Okay. That's, at least it's noted in the time.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, fine. The other thing is, I was approached about- The other thing is, I was approached about the Royal Canadian Legion, 396 in Chipewa. They just did a major renovation in the lower area, and they have approached a couple of people, and also came back to me to see if the city would contact them and see if we can assist financially in a lift up and down for the seniors in the legion in the Chipewa area, to see if there is some financial incentive to get them up and down from this area, because all they got are the stairs, and they're finding that a lot of people can't get up and down the stairs, so...
Refer to staff? Do you want to refer that one to staff?
I just want to refer that to staff, to see if they could contact them, and I think they were, they're looking for something as support financially...
There might be money available somewhere for that.
Up to $10,000 or something.
Could be.
Yeah.
Refer to staff.
We can put them in touch, for example, with Sleep Cheap and get them the applications and stuff.
Yeah, so moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Crater. I refer that to staff, to see if you can help them. Yeah. All in favor? Carried unanimously?
Okay.
Other new business? Counselor Strange?
That was a long one there.
Counselor Thompson. Anyways, I realize, Mr. Acton Mayor, we don't have a meeting until August 14th, and I just want to bring up a special event that's coming up, August 11th, that we hold every year, the Heaters Heroes Committee, along with the Falls View Hoos Brigade. It's our eighth annual Heaters Heroes Run for Children at Oaks Park, Saturday, August 11th. We have eight children, and basically, our mandate is to fund children and have children walk or run or cycle around the park who have terminal illnesses or life-altering illnesses or injuries. Like I said, it's our eighth year, we've helped almost 100 children in our Niagara region. We've helped a lot of kids, and this year, we have a lot of celebrities coming out, we have bands, we actually have Anthony De Carlo's Niagara Rock Academy coming and they're playing during the day, so it gives a chance of kids that never played before in their musical instruments to come out and showcase their talent. And it's a community event, it's for free. We've had one of our special children in Niagara Falls last year, Alex Louie, was one of our Heaters Heroes last year. He couldn't attend, but we, he was out of the city, but we helped spear-end a special moment where we got to meet Alex Ovechkin, and we made that wish happen. We're like a small wish foundation, and Alex got to have his dream of meeting Alex Ovechkin, and Alex promised he would score for Alex Louie, and he actually scored a hat trick. And then he ended up winning the Stanley Cup. So I think it was such a special connection that we kind of made that happen. So this year, we have eight children, and one of our children went through the same operation as Alex Louie, a special young teen girl from Toronto. And she had the exact same operation as Alex Louie, which is a rotation plastique, where they remove the bottom part of their leg and put the ankle back on, so they, backwards on the knee, so they can continue to play sports. And her name is, the young teen is Emma Nigu, and she will be walking her final lap this year with young Alex Louie, and who knows, maybe if Ovechkin gets a hold of what we're doing, maybe he'll come and bring the Stanley Cup, which would be really nice. But anyways, we would love, every year, we have celebs walk a lap with some of these children, and like I said, the funding goes towards them, as well as Heartland Forest, who rides his train, and Counselor Crater has driven his train, I think you have your special license for that train, which maybe you can come out and treat for that day. But our first, our first lap is going to be at approximately 12:30 PM on August 11th, and we would love our celebs this year, like we do every year, is to have our city counselors and our regional counselors, we'd love for you, Regional Counsel Val Patty, to come out and support these children, as well as senior staff. So we would love the support. It all stays in the community, Heartland Forest, and helping these, directly to these young children who are fighting for their lives. And I want to mention one other, one that we helped last year was Julianne Misk, who's a special girl, and I think Counselor Peter Angelo is going to speak about that in a second, but these are the type of kids that we love for you people to come out and support and help. It's a community event, it's totally free, we just basically go on donations for people coming, so if you can please support that, I appreciate it.
New business? Counsel Crater? Go ahead.
Yeah, I only have one item. Last council meeting, I brought up, this is due as a rural area, and I brought up the subject of a street light, and I just want to thank Mr. Holman, they had a chance to look at it and deemed it was a safety issue, and were able to put up a light that was great for the residents out there. But because of that, I had a couple of calls from some other people in the rural area that have some issues, safety issues about streetlights. And one of the questions that was asked of me, and I shared this with, I've already shared with Mr. Holman, but, and I'd like him to comment on it, but they wondered, what if the pole's already there, and they're willing to buy the streetlight? And they're willing to have it put up, of course, the city's got to put it up, and they were asking me the question, what if that approach was taken by some of the residents who feel strongly that there should be a light there? And, Mr. Holman, can you just share what you shared with me when I spoke to you?
I can't. Mr. Acton Mayor, what I spoke to Mr. Counsel Crater about was, the fact that we do have a policy, it was developed in 2012, it doesn't have those provisions for a cost-sharing opportunity, and it really needs to be looked at again. I'd like to bring it back to you early in the new term of council, to allow for something like that to happen. I did share with him that we have a list of about 75, 76 streetlight locations that really should be in place now, that do comply with the policy but don't have funding in place, and so maybe that will be an item that we can bring together in capital budget time.
So having said all that, what I wanted from the council, consider, the one request that I did receive, and it's from Mr. Ron Genario, and it's out on Schistler, and I was out to take a look at it, maybe we could just, maybe through a motion, I just asked staff if they'd take a look at that?
Okay.
They're quite willing to do cost-sharing. I know we don't have a policy, but we could take a look at it to see if it might fit.
Second by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Before I make it, Mr. Holman, is that, does it cause you any concern if I make that motion? I wonder, no? Okay, I just, that's where I am. I'll make that motion.
It was seconded by Counselor, Counselor Thompson?
Well, I was going to second the motion, but I had the same conversation, and the gentleman on Schistler was willing to buy the light and just have the city, the pole's already there, and it's a real safety issue, it's black out there, people like to walk on the road at night, and it's really dangerous. So I support what's going on.
All those in favor? Carried unanimously? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just have two items. First one stems from a public open house that happened last week. I know Counselor Crater, Counselor Strange was there as well. There's a development that's looking to go forward in Chipewa. The meeting was held downstairs in Committee Room 2, and there was a lot of people from Chipewa there. Their biggest concern was surrounding traffic, and it was in the area of Lyons Creek and Sodom Road. And I don't really believe that either one of those streets fall under our jurisdiction. I think that they're both regional roads. So I wanted to ask staff, what do we do to get ahead of this? Because, I mean, according to the residents out there, there's already a problem with traffic. A lot of times, people can't turn left from Sodom Road to head west onto Lyons Creek Road. There really is only one road in to Chipewa from the highway, so there's a steady stream of cars that come down there all the time. There's more and more development that is happening out there in terms of new subdivisions. I believe there's a plot of land right now that is going through secondary plan of subdivision. Mr. Hrlavich might know about it, but I think they're looking at adding another, I want to say, 700 homes out there. That's only going to exacerbate the problem. That doesn't even touch on the proposal that everyone was there to talk about, and I don't think the residents know about that secondary plan coming forward either. So I think what I'm asking staff is, what can we do, even though we don't have jurisdiction over the roads, to get ahead of the game? We really need to do something at that intersection so that traffic flows, especially traffic that's coming on Sodom Road, heading north to Lyons Creek. They need to be able to turn left or right and not start to queue on top of each other, because then there becomes a long line of cars. So I don't know if staff have given it any thought. I like traffic circles. The only problem with traffic circles is that, you know, it's not, they're not very pedestrian-friendly, in the sense that cars never really come to a stop. And I know that there would be people that would be crossing the road, trying to get to the riverfront, or trying to get to the Chipewa Creek, so...
Refer to staff?
I guess I'll let, yeah, I mean, I guess I got a comment from staff, but essentially, I'd like to see us kind of come up with a plan for what we're going to do with that traffic intersection, and either present it to the region, or somehow convince them to move forward with some changes, because we need to make some changes there.
Carl?
Through the Acting Mayor, typically, what we would do is have a resolution come from council, asking them, staff, to look at the intersection, bearing in mind the future development that's going to happen there. And I think when you said traffic signals, I think you meant stop signs, right? They don't use stop, traffic signals, they would have to, they would have to stop, right? They wouldn't go through the traffic.
No, what I said was a traffic circle.
Oh, circle.
Yeah, circle. Circles are good because they keep all cars moving.
Yes.
And I never see a queue like over on Mountain Road.
Yeah.
The problem with it, though, is it's not the most pedestrian-friendly. That's what I find. It's hard for people to get across, because the cars never actually come to a stop, so...
That's correct. Usually what happens with the traffic circle is you separate, you try to separate the pedestrians out, so what you'd have the pedestrians do is walk further down Lyons Creek and cross at a, kind of like a mid-block section, if there's a lot of pedestrians. So, you know, traffic circle is one of the, one of the things that you try to do, especially out there, you know, it's adjacent to the creek, they're usually nicer looking, and they do work with traffic. But I think what needs to be done is a resolution has to do with the region with respect to that, probably looking at all options, which is signals, stop signs, because it's just a single stop right now, it's not an all-way stop. And that might be an interim solution, and then perhaps with a view to look at, at traffic circle, keeping in mind some pedestrian treatments that allow safe movement of pedestrians. So something along that lines. And I know in the past, when councils asked that, I usually formulate a resolution, and I send it off to the traffic person at the region, which is Carolyn Rowell, and she's good at responding to these things.
Okay. And that's what I'll do, Your Worship. I'll make a resolution that, or I'll make a motion that we send a resolution on to the region. I'm asking about the intersection that might have been before, and some possible... If anyone thinks about all the development that we're doing, we're pushing back on the Sodom Road, all of it, so eventually, we're going to have some type of traffic problem, we need to take care of that note there, so I'll make that motion.
Second by Counsel Strange, Counsel Crater? Carried unanimously.
My last issue, Your Worship, is garbage, and I'm not sure if I'm going to make it paper, but it looks like the region is extending contracts to them, Tara, up until 2021, and they're looking at coming back with changes to the way that we do our garbage. Two of the changes that they're proposing are going to garbage collection every two weeks, and clear bags. I think that as someone who wears it, in the sense that...
As, what are you doing with our garbage? Although they don't really know that there's a separation between the city and the region, and the region is the one that looks after the contract, we should have a say in what we want. We should have a say in what the baseline level of service is. I mean, it seems like the service can, ever since we uploaded it, continues to dwindle and dwindle, yet the price doesn't dwindle and dwindle. So, I mean, is there an opportunity for the city to take the service back and, you know, do an RFP ourselves, have our own contract for garbage collection? This way, we can decide what our base level of service is? Or are we stuck in it now, in the sense that because it was uploaded to the region so many years ago, that they now have control of garbage collection? You know, it's somewhat frustrating, because a number of years ago, when we uploaded it, we had, we had city workers collecting garbage, and we also had city facilities where we dumped garbage, and the region used their own facilities. They don't do any of that now. They contract the service out, and we don't, and we don't use the regional dumps. So it doesn't really seem like there, like there's a solution to garbage, in the sense that it's just going to be a contract that's given out, so why don't we do our own contract? That would be my question. And my other question is, do we want to actually give input on what our baseline level of service should be? I'm not in favor to re-calling.
Mr. Acton Mayor, in fact, there is a resolution from the region, and they've invited us to comment on the level of service that is currently being provided. We can expand it to look at costs of providing the service ourself, if you wish. They're looking for comments by February of next year, and so I was planning to bring this back to the new council. If you'd like to see some of the background information ahead of time, I can certainly share that with you, but we're still doing a little bit of research, and hopefully have some, some good information.
Yeah, Your Worship, I'm fine with that. I mean, if February is the deadline for comments, then I'm fine with the new council deciding on that.
Any other new business? Motion for adjournment? Before we lose everybody? Counselor?
I just want to comment on the uploading, the waste collection to the region. I was around at that time, and I tell you, the costs involved were escalating so much. We brought it to council, and I was the happiest guy in this council at the time to upload that to the region, because it was really killing us with the budget requirements. So, anyway, it'll be interesting to have all the information, to just see where we stand with that, but I recall that very well. It was a serious problem financially for the municipality.
Motion for adjournment? Be adjourned.